You know, you just gotta look at her motive, what's behind her emotion.
Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, October 23rd. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, here we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize for the delay in the meeting tonight, which is starting a little late. So, thank you all for waiting so patiently. We'll start the meeting off by approving the consent agenda, which is approval of regular session minutes of October 9th, 2014, and acceptance of warrants number 17V15 and number 16P15.
I'll move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Nope. Hey, we do not have a student representative this evening, but I'm sure there's a lot going on with the schools, because I know the high school is ending the first quarter, is it next week? The end of next week, right, so I'm sure the kids are busy.
Yes.
Right, okay, good. And do we have a football game? This, is it, do you know if it's Friday or Saturday?
It's, uh, not Friday.
It's not Friday?
It's Saturday.
So, Saturday, we don't know if it's home or, well, in April. I know it's not.
It's away.
It's away?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
It's at Hamilton Wenham.
Hamilton Wenham, okay. Okay, I'm sure Vanessa will catch us all up to speed at the next meeting. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about anything on the agenda? No? Okay, we're gonna go right into superintendent's report.
Yeah, we have a couple of reports. So, you guys can come on, just kinda crowd around the table, because this is not my plan, it's our plan. And as you know, and I, you know, again, it's a very comprehensive document, I'm sure you went through it. You can add it to your binder. The purpose of this first part of the report, the one with the colors on it, is a progress report. So, what, if you went back and looked in your binder, you would've seen that we had for 2013-14, we had a series of action steps in each of the focus areas. Those focus, those action steps are now in the middle of this document, and they're, you see the color code. So, if it's, if it's completed, it's green, if it's, you know, moving along toward the progress, it's, the product, it's yellow, and then if it really hasn't been started really with any kind of, to any kind of degree, it's red. Okay. And then, because it's a cyclical document, right, so then you identify next steps. So, the second document you have takes the next step column and puts it into the action steps that you'll get a report on the next time you get a report. So, it is, it is a team. You know, if you notice, at the top, it'll talk about maybe somebody who's kind of a project manager, somebody who sort of, you know, oversees that particular area. But because it's, because we, we can't do things in isolation, we have to do them in coordination. Each individual person can't say, oh, I'm gonna do these things, and then it depends on other people, and then other people have a bunch of things they're gonna do. So, at the end of the day, it has to all come together, sort of like the pieces of the puzzle. So, everything isn't an equal priority. There are some action steps that are really pretty easy, and you can do them pretty quickly. But then there are others that relate to each other, like RTI, or the whole curriculum initiatives we've been doing. Those are significantly larger components of the strategic plan, and you notice that they, they, they go across some focus areas. There's some things in focus area one, two, and three that, that are all connected together. I think the other thing to, to note is, some people, some places do a strategic plan that'll say, these are our five things we're gonna work on this year, and that's it. And that, there's nothing wrong with that way of doing it. But what, what happens though is, you might work on those five things, but you still have to do the other work. So, what, what, what this kind of a plan represents is that we are doing all of these things anyway. And so, putting it in one place allows us to keep it connected. As opposed to, we have to do all this work anyway, and now we got these five things on top of it. So, everything should be embedded in the work that we know we have to do to meet legal requirements, to meet state requirements, to meet our local requirements, to follow policies. All those things are represented in the plan. So, you'll notice, like, technology. Last year, there, or in this plan, you're gonna notice there weren't that many technology initiatives that we were working on, because there were other things that were taking a lot more time, plus we didn't have West. Now, we have West, and if you look at the action steps for this next year, you'll notice there are significantly more.
I did notice that, yes.
And that's why, because we now have West.
That's great.
So, you know.
We have to keep them busy, right?
So, you know, obviously, the first, the first area we have has to do with, you know, increasing student achievement, and we're all responsible for that. And we all, that's part of the MCAS that you're gonna hear tonight, and the reports that we gave you for accountability, the PPIs, and all those kind of things that we're gonna talk a little bit more about tonight. And so, that's the first focus area is really on that. And then, we did, we did look at science this year, and in five, eight, and 10, and we have done quite a bit of work, and Julie can talk more specifically if you need to know about it, in developing our writing program, identifying a writing rubric that we're gonna use consistently for analyzing students' writing. In the past, you know, we had a lot of people using different rubrics, but this is more, a more consistent rubric that we're trying to, that we're trying to lay out. And we're also talking about a system where we, we wanna, when are we gonna collect writing prompts? You know, how are we going to use those writing prompts to help teachers plan writing groups? Those kind of things. So, those are all things that we've been, we've been working on. So, I don't know how you wanna do this. Do you want to, if you've looked through it, are there particular questions? Any one of the people here can answer any question about any element of the plan, because obviously, it's difficult for you to know exactly what some of these things mean. We know what they mean, but you might not. So, if there's any specific questions that you have, or anything you'd like to know a little bit more about, we'd be happy to do it that way if that's what you prefer, or we can walk you through it. It's really up to you, what's, what's best for you.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Walk through it?
No, why don't we see, anybody has any questions, if they went through it and marked it up?
Yeah, great.
Okay, so, one of the questions that I have is, under student support, focus area three, unfortunately, there's no page numbers.
I know, that's a good point, we need to padinate better.
Yeah, so, it's the first page of Project Manager, Dr. Straight.
Yes.
The question that I have was 33A-3, where it says, review and redesign the middle school enrichment and enhancement period. The question that I have is, how do you determine which student receives enrichment over enhancement? Is it, is it a number? What's the criteria?
It's really a team approach in looking at that, and we look at any number of things, including MCAS scores, the subtests of the MCAS scores. For students who are on individual education plans, we look at their specific standardized testing and see what their scores are, and make a determination there. I don't know if you want to add anything to it, Peter.
Yeah, that's, it's, it's not a special ed program, so.
No.
Right, exactly.
And we, it's been around for a while, and each year, we get a little better and a little sharper with identifying kids based on data. And we use, as Dr. Straight said, our MCAS scores, teacher recommendations, and, and other testing that has been created locally. Like, the math department has some tests that they give. And we also hope to incorporate the MAPS program that we purchased, and hopefully, we'll get a little technology boost, so we can.
So, it's a double dose for the kids, right?
Correct.
So, it's, they, everybody gets the general curriculum, and then certain kids are identified.
Now, are parents insulted about that?
And it is, it is good to say that it's not a special education.
Right.
That's not to say that there aren't any special education.
Exactly, sure, but it's not.
It's designed for kids that are behind in some areas. And it's, it's, it's kind of, I like to call it a dual thing rather than double, because it isn't, it isn't the same thing you're getting in English class another period of day. It's, it's trying to identify and work on where you're behind to boost that up, so you don't continue to fall behind in your regular class. That's the enhancement part of it. The enrichment is a project-based program that gives us time to go above and beyond what we have time for in the regular curriculum.
And the focus areas are ELA and mathematics. If you have one, it doesn't necessarily mean that you need assistance in the other, although you might, but it doesn't mean that you get both. So, it's really student-driven and based on where they might have weaknesses.
And is it also changing through the schedule, like, after first quarter, then?
The enrichment does. So, you, you, you have, if you're in enrichment, then you have a quarter of each of the four major academic spots. And I, I should add that science is where we're delivering that engineering, technology and engineering curriculum that we just purchased in seventh and eighth grade.
In the.
In the enrichment?
Science enrichment.
It's one period.
What about science enhancement?
It happens the same period.
No, there is, enhancement is just for math and English.
And it happens the same period. So, 'cause what used to happen is, if students got extra help, or we needed to give extra help, it would have to come out of a special. And not, a lot of middle schools do that, that's not an uncommon practice. It's also not an uncommon practice for special education students to receive their support services instead of a special. But if, if part of the middle school curriculum or the middle school program is to have specials, right, is to give kids opportunities to build social relationships, and, you know, to be active and all that, then you don't always wanna take them away from something that for some students is like the highlight of their day. So, we decided we were going to create a period, so that everybody, everybody that needs help can get help that period. The problem is that you have to do something with the other kids. And that's where we came up, I shouldn't say the problem, the situation is you have to, you have to do something with other kids, and that's why we, that's where we came up with, all right, well, let's do this enhancement program, where students will have the opportunity to get a little extra project-based to support the curriculum. But nobody misses a special in order to have it, it's a period of the day.
Right, I do think that's important.
So, do all middle school students have the science enrichment?
Most.
Since there's no science enhancement, well, most.
Above and beyond the new, with the engineering business?
Right.
That's what you're saying? So, every seventh and eighth grade student has this course, this new course that we.
Almost. There, there is a, there's some difficulty with meeting the requirements of some kids' IEPs.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
And now, when you say, so, you're gonna review the new schedule and redefine the goals of enrichment and enhancement?
Well, that's because you're gonna have sixth grade coming out. Because you're gonna have sixth grade coming out. So, so the question's going to be, you know, do you still, in the seventh and eighth grade, middle school concept, do you still have that period or that block? Because eighth grade has foreign language. So, the question is whether or not, what do you wanna do?
It's just for one grade.
Right, so that, we're just gonna have to figure out whether that's gonna continue, or we're gonna have to figure it out a different way.
It revolves around the fact that teachers teach five classes, but there are only four subjects to teach. So, what we used to do before this is we used to give them a double dose of English, actually, two English periods a day. And it becomes really embedded, because you wind up hiring staff to deliver it, and then it kind of perpetuates itself. So, we kind of made the move when some, some of our staff members retired, some of our English department members in the middle school, which gave us the flexibility to do something different.
But Peter might wanna go back to double blocks of English for seventh grade next year. We just don't know, that's why it's listed as a next step.
Seventh grade does have foreign language.
They have exploratory.
Exploratory, right.
But that is, that's scheduled in the, in the special block.
That's special.
Okay.
It's complicated.
Some middle schools have that as a team time period, and they do the same kind of project, project-based learning, but they do it through the grade level. And so, it, now that we would have freestanding seventh and eighth grade, you know, courses, it would, it would be interesting to, I think we're just taking a look at what, what other offerings can we do with this new structure? Try to think of it that way.
And how can we fix it so that all kids are getting the science piece, right, as well? So, we're really, you know, assessing it together to get inappropriate.
Okay, I think my other question may have been answered, I'm gonna say it, I'm gonna bring it up. 3A-2, under Evidence First Bullet, where it says, areas of weakness were identified at each school through MCAS data analysis for high-needs subgroup. You can give me an idea, who, who is high-needs? What do you, what, what makes them high-needs?
It's, um, so, the high-needs is aggregated through whether it's the students who might fall into low income, students who are special needs, students who have English language learners. So, we look at those different subgroups and make a determination based on what their MCAS scores, what do they need?
It's actually designated by the state.
Right.
When they got, when they define high-needs, that's who's, Donna's absolutely right, that's exactly what they're putting in into that category.
And Julie's probably gonna cover that.
Actually, I am.
Yeah. Okay, focus area four. That would be you, Carolyn, yes. 4A-3.
4A-3, yep.
Under red, director to meet with student focus groups, which I think is a great idea, we've talked about this. I know it's in the red, so when are we looking to begin that?
Well, that's one of Heather's, that's one of Heather's goals, we, when we met with Heather. So, she was hoping to start that soon, this, that, obviously, it's a this-year goal. So, she, she was calling it, what did she say? Student impact group. I forgot where that came from, but I think it came from one of the kids. One of the kids said, oh, it would be a student impact group, because, you know, our input would have an impact, you know, on, so, so this year, she's, Heather's starting to, she'll be setting that up.
Okay. Percentage, do we have a percentage of students buying? I know I didn't ask you this, and I would've.
Buying.
But how, how is our lunch program doing?
Increased participation greatly at Parley School.
Okay.
I think it's same as it was last year at the other two schools. But she's gonna be coming in November.
Yeah, well, we're still blocking that out, but yeah, she's gonna come in November, and she'll talk about.
Yeah, that is something I'm interested in knowing. So, maybe even soon, over the next couple of days, I can.
You're, you're interested in participation rates?
I'm interested in seeing how that revolving account is doing.
Oh, okay, revolving, got it.
Can anyone have anything that they?
I just had one question.
Sure.
4A-2, administer the youth risk, you can do your survey.
Yes.
It's in yellow, administer and analyze reports. So, was the survey actually done?
In ninth grade and 11th grade.
Oh, ninth and 11th?
It was canceled in seventh grade.
Okay. So, now you're just looking at the results?
Well, they haven't come back yet.
Oh, you don't even have it?
When they come back.
Oh, okay.
So, this, this comes from some kind of a national organization, is that right? And you, they send you the survey, you send it back to them, and they?
Yes, the, yeah. Pam, but actually, answer that question while I think, she's really from my survey.
Yes, yeah, the survey is produced by the Search Institute of Minneapolis, and they return a very large analytic report that correlates developmental.
Yeah, so, they'll, they'll actually provide us with a report that you all get a chance to take a look at.
Yeah, I'm very curious to see what that.
Yeah. Okay, what's that for me?
Yeah, I was just looking at 6D1. Develop a process to explain the budget to the public. I know, we always grapple with this, and.
Yes, we do.
It's, and.
I have a lot of extra pages in my.
Yeah, I mean, and the way the budget has been presented, and particularly the last year, it was absolutely, you know, excellent. The communication with the different town committees is definitely a positive note, a positive direction. But I was just, I was just wondering, on the website, you know how I love website development, that's really important. To me, that, that's a really critical way to get information out to the public, and I think more and more people these days will, do go to the, the website. And I, as we had discussed, Wes, I'd love to see some kind of, some kind of, you know, just study or, or data on how many people are going to the website. And I would, if I had to guess, I would say more and more. You know, I was just hoping if we could get like a glossary of terms, or maybe a little PowerPoint, or, or just a general calendar of the budget process. Not something that you'd have to, you know, update, but just to give people an idea, this happens generally in October. This happens in November. Because I know there are a lot of people in the town that are, you know, concerned about how the budget is put together, and just interested.
Yeah, that's right.
And if they could have a sense of what happens when, like that, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, makes sense.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so we just wanna go ahead?
Um, well, okay, on that. Then I wanted to go to the action step.
Which one?
Are we ready to go to the, the second?
To the action step?
Oh, the action steps.
Sorry. Yes.
Number five, for the technology.
Where did that go? It's here. I'm very, very, there's a lot here.
It's on this page, okay, on the back. One of them.
Top of 35? Yes. Yes, okay. It's one, two, three, it's the back of the third page. Something, something about Apple, Apple TVs, and what's been done in the high school.
That would be, that would be in this.
If you could share a little bit about what's happening with technology in the high school these days? Or what, what you plan to have happen for the rest of the year? With, you know, in terms of devices and Apple TVs?
That goes, well, we've already built most of what we're gonna do this year, as far as purchase, purchase. We're in that business lab, that's been redone, that's been updated. We have, we are in the process of providing all the teachers with their, with their MacBook Airs, we're getting those all set and now put together.
Okay.
So, then there's a few other non-money steps that we'll be doing. I've already started the technology committee, that's, that's going, we're gonna start working on technology plans. So, there's a, a lot of things moving forward that.
And that's an advisory committee?
That's an advisory committee, yeah. So, and we, we're, I'm trying to be as helpful as I can for Tech Tuesdays and get some professional development going, on all the technology, because that's gonna be important as we go forwards, make sure teachers and get the professional development they need to move forward.
So, Tech Tuesdays, what is a Tech Tuesday?
Tech Tuesday is one of the teachers, Elizabeth Marquetti, has been doing this for years, I guess.
Oh, right.
She has a, she gets a group of teachers together and does a subject, and goes over the subject in a professional development manner.
She's been doing that, okay.
So, I'm gonna try and give her.
Yeah, she, yeah, she's, uh, she's been really interested in, you know, furthering the use of technology. So, like, she'll come up with the, the topics that the teachers are interested in, and then, it's voluntary, of course, but she, she puts out a little reminder, you know, come when you can.
It's a, it's a study group.
It's really organ, it's really organic, I guess, that's what I would say, it's, comes up from what the teachers need.
I was thinking about, off our, we toured the new Pembroke, about how the teachers are all gonna need training on how to use the building.
Yes.
Like, on just the basic, how to use a building.
Well, that'll be part of our transition.
The orientation, anytime a new teacher comes, I could just see, like, why is that light on in my room? And they wouldn't know, and it's time to open the windows, or something, you know, like this.
No, it's true.
There's so many little technology things in the building that are.
That's true. Yeah. Pam, it says here on the action step, determine a plan for student use, like BYOD, or one-to-one laptops, portable cars, or a combo. That's a next step. So, that, that's gonna happen as part of the technology planning.
Right.
Right, so Peter will.
Okay, that's an action step.
Can you answer a question about the Apple TVs and the? So, we're, we're trying to, most cla, every classroom has at least a projector, and they are very old projectors. And we're trying to upgrade that with a, a big-screen TV. And an Apple TV device just basically allows you to connect and project on that TV wirelessly with the new MacBook Airs or an iPad.
Oh, great. So, it's not like.
So, we have, we have a handful of them in some of the rooms now, and it's kind of, as you know, there hasn't been any budgetary support for that yet. So, it's the PTA, the GEF, and wherever we can, you know.
It's like the smart boards at Pembroke, we're looking to build our, our collection or supply, okay.
Can I, just a, a quick question on, with the smart boards at Pembroke, and then the, the Apple TVs and TVs at the high school, why the switch, why the different strategy between the two buildings?
If you want, my bias.
Because I know one is significant.
Thanks, Michael.
Sorry.
I can tell you why we made that move, because smart boards are very expensive.
Right.
They have a very short shelf life, and they're expensive to fix.
It's a lot of training.
And the picture quality isn't, does not compare, at least, you know, the, the projection ones that we have in our district aren't close to a widescreen TV. So, basically, we can have that whole setup that, that we have now for half the price of a smart board.
And I guess that's sort of, I guess that's sort of my question, is, what was the thought process at Pembroke doing all smart boards?
In a younger grade, the smart.
Is it, okay, it's an age?
In a younger grade, it's a smart, it's, but it's interactive, it gives the students a chance to interact with technology.
A lot of their curriculum has a smart board capacity.
Yeah, but it was a while ago that Pembroke did that.
Yes.
So, I don't, I don't think, they wouldn't do that again, probably. I mean, smart, smart technologies, the company that, that owns that is really going to the, the interactive big-screen TV now.
Right.
Which are very expensive.
Well, it's just technology, just moving along.
Well, there also, there also is another option that Wes has been checking out, which is not the same level of interactivity as the smart boards, which we do believe are really effective for younger grades, and even through elementary mostly. But we're also looking at.
Interactive projectors.
Interactive projectors, which.
Projectors on anything, and they're, they're less than half the price of a, of a, of a smart board.
Right.
And that's effective, I've been testing two brands already, and I'm trying to get a third.
And you can.
They, they, four years ago, I said, no way, but the technology has changed so much in the electronic ventures that they're actually as responsive as a smart board without the cost.
And you can still, you can still access the smart technology in terms of the software. Half of the, half of the benefit to the smart, to the smart boards is the smart technology software.
And they'll use that even with the smart, with the.
The projectors.
So, we, we will definitely, I mean, we haven't finalized completely the plan for the new school around technology, but we have actually got a, a pretty, we're very close, we're just trying to work out the budget, and then we'll, that will be one of the things that we will come back and talk to you about, so that you can, you can be up to date with it, and, you know, have the opportunity to weigh in on it.
Peter, can I, I wanna ask you a question about the science and technology class, right, the new.
The one in middle school?
Yeah, and, well, and now you've got increasing proficiency on here in grades five, eight, and 10, so it's also Pembroke.
Like, that's through MCAS, where we were looking at five, eight, and 10, that's how our students are assessed for science, from the state?
What do, what does technology assessment include? I mean, we're saying science and technology, what's, what's in the curriculum these days?
Engineering.
Engineering and learning about technology.
Design process, problem solving.
Is coding included at all?
Coding is, is absolutely something that we're looking at, including. We talked a lot about how we would factor that in, and how we would do that, whether it would be during the school day or in some of the STEM capacities that we're trying to build in after-school programming. So, it's, we're really trying to find the right place for that, but we're very interested.
We'd like to do a focus on some STEM stuff when the new Pembroke opens.
Yeah.
So, that, we're trying, that we're all trying, we're trying to put all this together, so that there's a, a strong focus on STEM in the, in the district. And we'll actually have a session later in the year, where we're gonna talk about the STEM activities that we wanna be, we wanna be putting in.
Oh, great, that's great. 'Cause another thought that just came to mind, I had a conversation with my daughter after school today, and she's telling me something that she did in class, was in math. The teacher said it was very complicated, she was like, but Mom, it was so easy, and I was the first one done. And I said to her, well, you have an attitude.
She likes that, yeah.
And, and she said, but what does that mean? Like, what is, what do I do with that? And I just started thinking, like, so she's already wondering, like, I'm already able to say to her, you have a, you have an ability, or she's recognizing, and I'm thinking about all kids, probably at some moment, they recognize, I get this. But what does it mean? When do they find out? When do they start to get a sense? Like, is there a place, is it built in somehow in their school experience?
Immediately, and when we do start looking at the STEM, and, you know, some of the workshops that we attended last year, that is the whole focus, is that you bring those ideas and thoughts down to a very early age, where you start looking at all the things in life that you can possibly do.
Right, right.
With science, technology, math. With science, technology, math, um, you know, even through an ELA conduit. But, um, I, we, I went to a workshop yesterday on STEM and there was, um, a vocational teacher in the high school, but he had linked agriculture to STEM.
Oh, that's fabulous.
So a farmer, you know, and because he, he started thinking as a child, well, astronauts, what are they gonna eat? So he linked it, so this whole fascinating field, so right from.
That's what I'm thinking, it's like, how do you build these webs for kids? Like, they suddenly get, oh, I can do this and it's easy for me and that was fun.
Where else can I do it?
Where do I take it? Where does it lead me? And I'm like, I'm trying, I'm like trying to give her like, like, oh, does this kind of a person need that kind of a skill? I don't know, it just occurred to me.
So we will, next, we will start looking at all those possibilities and options to get children involved.
That's great, that's good, I'm glad to hear.
What else can we tell you?
Glad to see there isn't a lot of red.
I know. We're a busy group. We're always surprised when we put it together.
That's what I did at first, I went to all the reds.
You know, again, it's, it's all, it's, it's authentic because it's work we're doing. Right? And that's why you see the reds and, and some of the things that are, are not something that are easily green immediately because they really, there is an evolution to them, there are layers and levels. Um, it's not simply a, an action step, you can just say, oh, that's great, we can make that green, because there's, there's more to it.
Maybe you wanna share the, the color code with the public, because I don't, they're probably in the dark when they're talking about red.
Oh, and we are, and we will, we always will publish this on the website too, if anybody's interested. Um, but we have a process by which when we talk about progress, that we identify from our action steps, if they're green, if they're, if they're, they're green, um, they're, um, completed, pretty much, you know, whatever we said we were gonna do, we completed it. Um, if it's yellow, that means we started it, we were at some point along the way, um, involved in getting it done, but we're not quite there, so we can't say it's green. But in the evidence, you can see what we did toward it and then you can see the next steps for those things that still aren't done, that would've made it green if we had been able to do them. And then the red means that we haven't started it yet. That for whatever reason, it sounded like a great idea when we were planning it. And remember, this is a three-year plan, so we're actually almost at the end of the three-year plan. So we will have to do another installment, you know, for the next, uh, for the next, uh, set of years that we decide on and, um.
Well, there's lots of green, which is really.
There's lots of green, cause as I said, you know, we have a, we have a lot of people working together and it, and that's the way it should be. It should be, it's the work we have to do anyway, so it should be green. So, but we, we also have a lot of things that come at us that, you know, aren't on the plan that we have to respond to. So we try to keep ourselves focused on, you know, what we're, what we're about, which is usually the most important things we're about are doing the best for our kids and our families, obviously, instructionally. Uh, but we wanna keep kids safe, you know, we wanna have state-of-the-art technology, so it's a tool for working and learning. And then we wanna be operationally effective and efficient. Uh, and all of those things are embedded in the plan.
It was, it was enjoyable reading.
Well, thank you for taking the time to read it, I know it is a big document.
It's an impressive document, actually.
But I think it's, it's, um, you know, I, I, I say it all the time, I mean, I'm so blessed to have a team that, you know, is very skilled and talented and, and we're all trying to, we bring something unique and different, but we all, at the end of the day, know what our goals are and what our mission is and what we wanna accomplish together. And I think we're always very proud of, you know, the work and we are exhausted some days, this is a, this is a lot of work, but, um.
I can see.
It is, it is in the best interest of the town of Georgetown, the families and, most importantly, the students.
It's really a wonderful collaborative team as well, we all, as you can tell just when we're speaking, we just work really well together and collaborate in all the different areas, so it's, it's unique.
That's so, so important.
Yeah, it's important today.
It's how you get it done, you know, if people are not, not on the same page or they're, there's infighting or, you know, we just figure out how to get to the common ground, we, like I said, we're all different, you know, but we, we're, we're focused on what we wanna accomplish together. And everybody's got each other's back.
And Wes being the, um, new member.
How do you feel about that, Wes?
I know that you're busy, I'm sure you.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, I don't want you, how you folks got along with that before I got here.
We didn't, Wes.
It's a lot of work and the.
Actually, that's not true, Peter really stepped up and did a lot.
It's a great amount of work, there's no doubt about it.
So you're enjoying yourself so far?
Yeah.
That's good.
Good. He's not just telling you that, he did tell me that the other day.
Yeah, no, that's great, no, we're very happy to have you.
Yes. In fact, Wes and I are gonna go meet, um, the town technology folks, we already have that set up. So we're gonna go, we're gonna go chat with, uh, Mike, Mike and, uh, Red Kelly and, uh, see if we can't start a dialogue with, with them. And then maybe, you know, we go to FinCom and talk to them maybe a little bit about, uh, technology planning, cause remember they, I, I feel like, I feel like we sort of owe that to them because they did kind of go out on a limb and, you know, af, after we had those lengthy conversations and supported, I'd love to have them meet Wes and feel the same confidence that, that we're feeling and that I'm feeling about the decision that we made to bring Wes here.
Yeah, that's good, I'd like to hear how that goes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, everybody, thank you. Now Julie, you can hang up here because we're gonna talk about MCAS while we're here. It's actually, it actually worked out well, actually, to have the district, cause we're talking the district level and then you're gonna hear, you're gonna, you're gonna start hearing about school improvement plans, um, next. So we're going from big to small, big to yuck, smaller.
Where did Julie go?
I see him, he's back there.
Okay. So, Julie, yeah, so we have a few slides that go along with your, that go along with your, um, we're not gonna do a big presentation for you on this unless you want one. Um, but we would love to walk you through some highlights. And actually, Julie and I chatted today about, uh, a little, a couple of other questions I had that maybe you might have, so there'll be some additional information. And Pam, you did some, some, uh, analysis and I, I did make sure Julie had a copy of that as well and we'll work that into the discussion here today.
Great.
All right.
Yeah. Screen is on, the projector.
So, eh, well, Julie's getting that set up. So, the MCAS results, uh, came back into the district in the summer. And they, they don't send everything all at once, they do send some things sometimes in raw scores. They haven't got the performance levels set up yet, so, you know, we've done this enough years, we can kind of infer where we think, based on the raw score, that our students are gonna fall. But really, until full MCAS profiles come back, we really don't have, you know, the information to be able to say this many. And our goal is definitely always to increase the number of students in the proficient and advanced. And you, you saw the accountability data, that's how, when they figure out where you fall, they assign points to that. So every student who's proficient and every student who's advanced gets a hundred points and then going down from there. So, is that gonna work, Julie?
I don't know, we'll, we'll try to get it to work while we're talking here.
We'll go to Plan B.
We'll go to Plan B and I'll tell you what I was going to say anyway.
I like coming to help you. There we go, we got the technology guy.
The, the state transitioned into, um, the ESEA.
Is it on, Wes? Is the picture on?
It's really taken a long time warm up.
Okay. Well, maybe we can, uh.
Right, well, if it comes up.
Maybe shut some of the lights down.
You have your, um, your screen mirrored or you have it?
I don't know.
Cause right now, you're, you're getting something, but it's not, it's not brightening up fast enough to project over there. It's really slow. No, I don't think you're gonna get, I think that thing may be shot.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's not, it's not getting bright, see, it's not, it's not changing its brightness at all.
Was he checking on something in there or is he all set?
It's on, so there's not much you can do, there's nothing.
Okay, well, let's, um, let's go through, we, you know, we, we do have some slides, so we can, uh, we can, we can talk from the slides. And then you have your handouts. Oh, there we go.
There we go.
Now I've just gotta mirror your screen.
And that would be?
Uh, Windows P.
See where we need Wes? We love him.
Now we can control it and see it.
Oh.
Come on.
It's thinking, I think.
All over here, oh, you know what?
There we go.
That's a little.
Oh, like now it's not going, well.
You just gotta get to the right page now.
I, I am, but it shouldn't be showing that, that's a little, okay.
That's what you see there.
How do you get the full screen, Wes? Oh, slideshow, where's that? And, I see, and slideshow, but that's not gonna. Is that this little, that thing there?
Are you at the end of the screen or?
No, I'm at the very beginning.
I've never seen that kind of screen.
I've never seen that.
Where are you working in? What?
That's the preview screen.
It is?
Yeah, you have to start the slideshow.
Yeah.
So where do you do that, Peter?
Don't take that off.
Well, I have to, because.
At the top?
My whole.
Oh, you can't see the.
I won't be able to see what I'm doing. Don't we love technology?
Wonderful when it works.
It should start off.
I'm going to go from, I'm going old school, I'm gonna go old school here, remember, okay?
Oh, you're gonna shut it down and try it again?
Oh, what were you trying to use it? Cool doc?
No.
No, cool doc didn't work.
No, I wasn't.
Sometimes turning something off and then on again.
That happens to me all the time.
Works like always, half, half the time. Thank you, gentlemen.
That was the old school method and it still works.
It still works. Pride and true, right, Julie?
Okay, um, so one of the things that, um, we have been working with, um, in the state of Massachusetts is the reauthorization of ESEA. And, um, the whole capacity for the reauthorization of that was to bring Massachusetts to a place where we were focusing on lowering the proficiency gaps of students. So that has a lot to do with our, our, um, high needs populations and things like that, that every district has. Um, although it's different across, um, oh, we have some copies here.
Oh, we didn't have them, oh, I'm sorry.
It's different across, um, towns and districts depending upon.
I could use another one.
Okay. Your student population.
Okay, sure.
Um, and with that also comes with, um, sorry, with that also comes the accountability status. So, um, you've been hearing that the high school's level one and, and things of that nature and that kind of comes along with this new packaging of the, of, um, the flexibility for ESEA. And so, the, um, Elementary Secondary Education Act. It's a, it's a mouthful. And, and that in twenty fourteen, as you probably remember with, um, NCLB, we were supposed to, at the state of Massachusetts, everyone would have been proficient or advanced.
It just goes right off of our tongue.
Yeah, I was saying, so in twenty fourteen, we, we, the state, you know, the whole, we were all under NCLB, you know, assuming that we would've gotten to this place where all of our children were proficient or advanced, but that didn't happen. Didn't happen across the state or any other state. And so the reauthorization, um, in order to, to get into this, we had to file a flexibility waiver and that's what, that, this is the, the changeover from that into this. And it's, a lot of dialogue, obviously, but, um, a lot of things change with that. And so we used to talk about AYP back in the day, now we talk about PPI, which is Progress in Performance Index. And that looks at student growth, which is something new that we've been talking about in the last couple of years. Um, and all the indicators for growth across different subgroups. And so we'll talk a little about that tonight. Um, and it also came with, um, school percentiles, so it kind of rates schools with the same student populations against each other in that sense of where they are falling in that trajectory. And, um, the high needs subgroup, students used to get, um, if a student was considered high needs and that could be special ed, ELL, low income, there are a, a number of different groupings that fall in this high needs subgroup. Um, a, a town or a city, that student would count more than once in your, in your data. So in your special ed data and your low income data or in your ELL data. So you would have three, three sets of data that you'd be working out of and, and this combines all of that so that your scores, um, are kind of more reflective of your population. So you're not trying to figure out, well, where was this child counted, in which subgroup? Do you know what I'm saying? So they've kind of separated that out and made it a little bit more clear.
And they only count if the subgroup has forty students, right?
Right.
So some places that are very small subgroups, you may have students who are struggling, but you don't get a, you don't get a score. There's no, you don't, you don't know.
You can't track, bear progress.
Because they said that the sample size isn't big enough to really say anything, you know, reliable.
So, that's just a little background. Um, so what we do now with this new setup is we try to determine what, um, the PPI measure is for the district, what the CPI measure is for the district and also for the schools. And sometimes people have questions about, you know, what does PPI measure? And it measures, um, progress over two years and cumulative PPI is, represents trends, student trends of learning over time. And then there are core indicators that make up PPI in English, math and science. And that's the gap narrowing work that we're trying to do across the district and across the state. Um, and also factored into that is something that we've been talking a lot about in the last couple of years, is student growth percentile data. And that's how much a child has grown over the course of the year between grades three through eight in ELA and science, I'm sorry, ELA and math. And, um, the reason why they're able to kind of track that a little bit more is because every child in grades three, four, five, six, seven and eight are tested in ELA and math, but they're not tested in science every single year. They're tested in grade five and eight. And so they don't have the capacity to really test out what student growth looks like in science because of that. And, um, they also can't consider grade ten to be a true measure in that way of student growth because we don't have ninth grade students that are tested through MCAS. So it's this really interesting way that they're trying to measure growth over time, but it only happens at certain grade levels and in certain content areas with the way that they have the MCAS set up right now. So, um, they also factor into that the annual dropout rate, if you have one, um, a, a high, a statistically high dropout rate, um, which obviously we don't in this district, but in, in some other bigger cities and urban districts, that's, that's a real, it's a reality people live every day. Um, and the cohort graduation rate, how many students do you have graduating as of, in a four-year mark, in a five-year mark of time through high school? Um, and then, um, different content areas have the ability to gain extra credit and that's moving ten percent of your student population from proficient to advanced or out of warning into needs improvement. And so it, it's kind of like a swing in that sense. If you're able to move your students up, you'll gain some points, um, in your PPI scale for, for that. And, um, obviously, you know, that's a really nice positive. Um, or if you're re-engaging, you have a high dropout population and you're re-engage, re-engage in students, um, two or more over the course of, of the time that they've dropped out to come back into the system. And there are a lot of, obviously, state-funded programs that help support that kind of, that goal. So we don't have that issue, obviously, but, you know, like I said, in some cities and towns, that's a very real situation. So this is the mathematical algorithm, which I'm not gonna make you figure out, but it's a different way to look at what I just told you. And, um, and, and we get the reports back to us for PPI, um, in a range of twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five or a hundred. So it's kind of measuring how our students did on that, on that type of a scale. So we, um, do some analysis that way, but we also do analysis like what you've seen through any kind of report that you can gather off the DOE website or, like, some of the scales that I'm gonna show you. We don't always look at the data the same way, but we try to measure it through accountability and through student growth through the MCAS exam. Okay. Okay, so, um, with the, with the changes, we have been, um, identified as a level, which every single school district has a specific level based on where their schools are scoring. Our district is a level two district, which is exactly where we were last year. Um, our high school is a level one and our middle school in Pembroke is at level two. Um, and basically what that means is one or more schools didn't meet the PPI target of seventy-five. So we have a PPI target of seventy-five that we're, that we're expected to reach and we're at about sixty-seven in that range. So we're moving up on the PPI scale when you combine all those school scores and that's how that's identified. But we're not at the seventy-five mark is, which is what the state is hoping, but we have until twenty seventeen to get to that point. So it's kind of a progression over time, look at data. And so we are progressing upwards, it's just we're not specifically there yet across all schools. I hate to ask this. What does that mean? Switch over to Park, click, all this goes away. I have no idea, to be totally honest with you, I, I don't know how they'll report data, um.
That was one of our things we questioned.
That was one of the things that, you know, we have questions about because we use this data so much for a lot of what we do.
And I was wondering even if, if they went to a, a newer version, an updated version of MCAS, how would that change?
I have a feeling, I have a feeling the PPI things won't change. I think PPI won't change because, I don't know how they'll configure it, but I don't think that'll change because that's in place until twenty seventeen.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know what I'm saying? So that piece, I think, will stay.
As per the waiver.
As per this, yeah, ESEA flexibility waiver. But the other part of how reported data comes to us, I don't, I don't know what that would look like.
Might change in twenty-seventeen.
True.
Depending on what the state test is.
But the state has made a commitment.
Well, the way, we got the waiver to, to, that, two thousand seventeen.
To twenty-seventeen to give you data in this form.
The state got the waiver to twenty-seventeen for this component.
So twenty-seventeen. What happens if we don't, um, you know, twenty-seventeen comes and we don't get to seventy-five?
Yeah, well, that was the same question we had, um, in twenty-fourteen about proficient and advanced. Do you know what I'm saying?
Right.
I don't, I don't know what that will look like. Um, I don't know. I know that we will get to seventy-five, I'm not, as a district, I'm not worried about that part. But, um, I, I don't know, um, what happens at the state level should, you know, that not occur.
It's harder, it, when you're higher performing districts, it's harder to show those gains.
Yes.
When you're a lower performing district, you make the gains. Like, we were just talking about in a neighboring town where, you know, there was, the, the school was much, started at a much lower place. If they hit targets that they're showing that they're narrowing the gaps, which they are doing, they can receive a level-one status because they've narrowed the proficiency gap. Even though if you put the two districts together around proficiency.
Point in our district, but, you know, it's kind of interesting how it plays out.
How it all plays out. But their focus is narrowing the gaps. It's not necessarily what many of us want to talk about, which is increasing the number of kids that are proficient.
I know, so any- That's really what we look at. We look at, how do we, how do we increase student learning? So that it's not, how many kids do we have in warning, it's all of our kids are in proficient or advanced. Do you know what I'm saying? It's really moving up the scale in that way as opposed to just closing small components.
It is interesting with that neighboring town that is lower, and then people are like, well, wait a minute, they're a level-one, so maybe that's a better community to move into. Like, it's-
It's really interesting because proficient or advanced, to me, is, is the greatest indicator.
The what?
The greatest indicator.
Okay.
How many kids you have in proficient or advanced really is an indication of how well your school is doing. Our high school has ninety-seven percent of our kids in proficient or advanced. So that, to me, says a lot, um, a lot more than what another district may be reporting out as. Do you know what I'm saying? So, uh, when I look at student growth and learning, I look at how many kids do we have, you know, in the highest levels? Because to me, that, that paints the picture.
But we, we know from the data comes, that comes back, what students are falling below that line of proficiency. So we know them specifically.
Sure.
We know pretty detailed information about what kinds of information they fell short on, what kind of information they did particularly well on. And we, we have the opportunity through the interventions we, we use to, to work specifically with those students. And that, that's great because what we, what we'll find, and then the other thing we have is we have the student growth percentile. So when we look at student A, and we see them in warning in math and needs improvement in English Language Arts, but we look at their student growth percentile in each of those, and we see the student growth percentages, sentiles in the eighties. Well, we, you know, we have to give that kid a lot of credit because they've made, that's what we want to see, is that the student is making growth. Because what we have seen in this district is students that started out in the elementary grades, maybe being in even the warning or the needs improvement category. By the time they are taking the test in tenth grade, they're proficient. So the goal is-
Beautiful story.
Yeah.
I think it's a wonderful story, but I also worry about the state's emphasis on-
Closing the gap.
This whole PPI and closing the gap because it, I wonder if, if you believe we spend so much time worrying about wondering the gap, closing the gap, that the students are really, who come into school and they're performing at the upper levels.
Yeah.
Are they, are they being challenged enough in school to keep them engaged in school?
Well, I, I wouldn't say that the, the district's emphasis is, um, overly, um, unbalanced on the, you know, closing the gap end. I mean, we absolutely know which kids are also scoring advanced. And those are students that we absolutely need to make sure are being challenged. And one of the things we do have in our, in our strategic plan is to make sure that that is happening, particularly at the elementary and middle. It's, I, I think we're all pretty confident that it can happen at the high school fairly easily because you have your, you know, your honors classes and your AP classes and those kind of things. But, you know, the, there, there's no, that's part of what our interest in STEM is. Because we see that as being a way to, you know, sort of capitalize on the creativity and the curiosity that students have. Um, and, and our curriculum is supposed to adapt for that. Um, so I, I think in our, in our, we're, we're, we're caring about all kids here, but definitely we know, as you see in the focus area three, the student support. We know we have to take those students who aren't proficient because we need them to get a high school diploma. That's a, that's a, that's a huge ticket.
Yep, I understand, I understand.
Yeah, but, but I, I think we all hear your concern, we, we, we share it as well. That we need to, we do talk about it a lot. How are we going to challenge those kids that, that really need to be challenged?
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful.
Well, you may not be able to see this.
Well, they have, they have those graphs, they have those graphs.
From far away. Um, but every year, we, we try to give you, um, a visual in terms of how students are doing. Um, and this is a, a comparison, I can't even read it honestly off my computer, but this is a comparison of-
Do you want this, Julie?
I've got it, I actually have the other copy here, thankfully. Um, four years of data and, you know, kind of measuring out how our students did at the high school level for ELA, math, and science. And, um, on the right-hand side is middle school, um, for ELA, math, and science as well because, uh, those two grade levels are tested in those three content areas. Um, and so we kind of get a nice picture of, of how our students are doing. And as you can obviously see, students grow and their knowledge grows over the course of time. So two years of high school certainly brings them to this place where, you know, we have the majority of our students scoring in proficient or advanced, um, across most content areas, truly. And so that comes with maturity too, and so we talk about that a lot. How does, um, the maturity of a, of a child factor into, um, the, the things that you see here? And also, um, the growth over time. You'll see students grow from third grade. You may not see the same student, um, growing to this rate that we have at the tenth grade level between grade three and grade four. But over time, the cohort data is showing us that our students who are in district from grade three up through grade ten are, are certainly, um, just knocking the top off of this thing, which is fantastic. And that's what we like to see. Um, so I could run through this with you. I know I have a written version for you, and I also have like kind of this schematic. I'm not sure how, if you want me to talk about it, or if you just had specific questions about some of the data that, that we have here.
You referring to that?
Yeah.
Sure, you can go, go ahead.
Want me to go through that? Okay. All right, so overall, um, ninety-four percent of students in grade ten scored proficient or advanced in English Language Arts, and we're very happy with that. We know that our high school has been identified as a level-one high school because of the student's achievement at the high school level, and also the, the gap narrowing that was done there as well. Um, Boston Magazine named Georgetown High School, um, the top twenty-five in area high schools. So, um, certainly this has something to do with that, just one piece of it though. Because our AP scores are wonderful and our SAT scores as well. Um, and we're very proud of that achievement. Um, one of the things I do want to just pause and talk about is the fact that this year's MCAS scores reflect, um, a one-hundred percent transition into the new standards for math and ELA. And so we were really interested, when we were kind of waiting for the data, we were really interested to see how our students would do with, uh, would have done or did do with this entirely new set, if you will, of standards. Last year, the MCAS test was a fifty-fifty split between old standards and new standards. And this year's test was a reflection of all new Massachusetts standards. And so, um, without too much revision, you can see that our scores have, have, have either grown or kind of, you know, stayed at that, the high level at the high school, which, which is great news for us. It tells us that we've been on the right track. Um, so we're happy for that. Um, eighty-five percent of our tenth graders scored proficient or advanced in mathematics, and eighty-six percent of our students at the tenth grade level scored proficient or advanced in science, which is also striking and, uh, very positive. So we're very happy for that. And, um, that, the science test hasn't changed. I will say the science standards are under revision though at the state level. Um, Margaret and I were at a STEM conference yesterday, and they, they definitely did some discussion about how the new standards will incorporate, um, a strong focus on STEM and the capacities for that. And so we're trying to, you know, anticipate that and, and, and look at those ways. And we started that with the eighth grade course, seventh and eighth grade coursework at the middle school this past, this year. And, you know, trying to build that in starting with last year. And so, um, we're trying to build that to support the future changes that we see coming with the standards. But they haven't really told us anything about how that test could change in the future. We don't really know yet.
The old standards are very old, aren't they?
They are.
I mean, like nineteen ninety-nine?
They, they've been, yeah, they have been updated through the National Science Standards. Those who've changed have been updated, but the state has not yet, um, fully updated those standards in quite some time, so.
I mean, I-
It is taken for that.
Fifteen years, that's when my sophomore was born. Subject area test, as opposed to the math and, uh, English, which are more comprehensive of all the standards. You can take the biology, you can take the-
The high school test is, yeah, it's a course-specific.
Course-specific, that's right.
And, um, the fifth and eighth grade tests are cumulative. So it's really K through five knowledge in the fifth grade test, you know. It's in all of that with six, seven, grade six and seven in the eighth grade test. And so it's, it's really spiraling and cumulative at those grade levels, whereas tenth grade is much more course-specific, and so.
So that's where the science and technology test is an option. The districts can choose. They can choose biology, and then what's the other one?
Intro to physics.
Intro to physics.
So the districts choose another student?
The districts choose the test. And we've chosen biology.
We do offer, um, the one, the one section of intro to physics, which, um, our students do very well in, um, as well. But we didn't have quite as many that they would report out like this at the state level. Um, how our data, with that, okay. All right, so at the middle school level, eighty-five, uh, percent of our students scored proficient or advanced in ELA. And I, I think I went through and I did English Language Arts in this kind of fashion. Seventh grade students, eighty-six percent were, uh, proficient or advanced in ELA. And in sixth grade, seventy-four percent of our students were proficient or advanced in ELA. And so there is a progression there, obviously, of skill and of knowledge and, um, and growth. And you can see that as you go six, seven, eight, and ten, certainly.
And we have made changes to the curriculum at the middle school over the last three or four years.
Over the last three years, very much so.
And I think that's definitely reflected in the, in the scores.
Mm-hmm. Um, across middle school mathematics, eighth grade students scored forty-nine percent proficient or advanced. Seventh grade students scored sixty-seven percent proficient or advanced. And sixth grade students scored fifty-six proficient or advanced. And one thing that we have noticed, especially through the vertical team, is as we break down that eighth grade, seventh grade, and sixth grade MCAS math test, that's where you see the most, most transition from the standard, in the new standards. That's, that's where the, the heaviest emphasis was with the new standards.
So are you saying that is, that could be a reflection of the-
Yeah, we kind of, we were wondering how that would work out, um, how the new standards would be reflected in this test, in this particular MCAS test. And across the state, um, the middle school math is something that every district is, is really taking a look at. Um, how, how is, what, what our, our students are scoring at reflective of, you know, the work that they're doing in the classroom? But also, how is this new standard base changed? And, and how is it asking more of students?
Yeah, that, I think that's the-
That's the real question.
Is the, the alignment, uh, they were talking about it today at this thing we were at. Um, what used to be taught in eighth grade, much of it now is taught in seventh grade. So, yes, that's why the whole discussion with the Common Core standards and the dummying down, just, we can't support that because that's just not what we've seen. But we have seen that in math, that the expectations for content have definitely-
Increased.
Increased at the, at the middle school level.
Absolutely.
Which is a tough time, right? Like, that's just a difficult time anyway.
Absolutely.
You know, with other things going on.
If Paula was sitting here, she would say, you know, in their adolescence. And so we also have to look at, you know, developmentally, um, how kids are working.
And if Paula was here, she'd say, we need to make sure at the elementary level, we are making sure they have the foundational skills. I, I agree with her a hundred percent with that. But my concern still is the way the kids in elementary school are being taught math, and then all of a sudden in middle school, it's like, forget about what you learned in elementary, now we're gonna go to this style of math.
We've definitely had a lot of conversations about that in the vertical team, about supporting the conceptual basis for math in this transition into middle school. And it's something that we'll talk about again as we transition our sixth grade down into the elementary school, and how that will work again when our sixth graders leave the new Pembroke and move into the seventh grade. Because ultimately, the, the expectations at the grade level increase as the students move through middle school. And so we, it's really about marrying those two worlds in a really good way to support student learning so that our students are using conceptual knowledge to build on this really dense material at the middle school.
But it shouldn't really be about the curriculum. It shouldn't be about the way the curriculum is taught. It should be about whether or not the students have ma, are mastering the material. Because just as we say, I, I might teach, uh, my contact tent with a textbook more than Pam might teach the content with hers. It's, it's clearly gotta be about what are the standards requiring? And what is it that kids need to know and be able to do? So that they not only learn the information, but we've learned today that they are able to transfer the information.
And where can they take this information?
So everyday math, um, is a curriculum that spirals, and it's a curriculum that's very concept-based. What's not always clear is exactly how you can take the particular skills out and teach them more in isolation, which is a more traditional way of teaching math. Um, what this vertical team is doing is finding from the standards those places where certain things need to be mastered. And then they're working it into the spiral to make that more clear and explicit to the teachers. But the tenants of everyday math as a curriculum are to, um, help students see the mathematics in real-world situations, so that there's an application there. And, and that, that should be fine. And then as kids get into the middle school, they, if they have those foundational skills and understand those concepts, it really shouldn't matter what we're using to teach them in the middle school. It really shouldn't matter. It, it's, they, maybe they're ready to make a transition to more, um, algorithmic kind of things because they've got the concepts in place, right? So that, that, I, I think that sometime, I mean, I, I hear your concern Barbie, and I hear it from other people, so I know it's real. But I, I think that-
My concern's real. I know, you can say what you want, my concern's real.
Well, the, the concern is real, but I'm just trying to help you understand how, how that, how that, well, it, it will around the standards. It will around the standards. Um, and that's what the vertical team is doing.
And it is what we're doing, in fact. We, um, we went through the entire everyday math curriculum and identified those very specific, we call them critical areas, that we know teachers need to focus on so that students are getting both components. They're getting a traditional support system as well as conceptual support system so that when students move up through elementary and into the middle school, it's, it's been practiced so that it's not necessarily something that's brand-new as they transition into a different, maybe more traditional approach to teaching math. And so that's our goal, is to make sure that this transition is a better one and a stronger one.
Yeah, more seamless.
And much more seamless so that students are, and teachers, our, our vertical team teachers are wonderful because they'll, they'll have long, long conversations with the elementary teachers. So, "Show it to me, show me how you teach it, show me what it looks like." And, and, and explain to me like what I should be looking for in my grade level at my content. And so we haven't been able to have those conversations before we had the vertical team. It's really important to build that conversation.
Because those conversations are a big part of how you would make it seamless.
Absolutely. And that's, that's how we make it seamless, is to have the conversation and to build the, the reference point for both, both ends of the spectrum, elementary and middle school.
And some of the highest scores that we see in the district in math are at the fifth grade and have consistently been at the fifth grade. So, so that, you know, that speaks to, you know, it's, it is a different way of looking at math in some ways. And I know sometimes that that's a little hard. People are like, I'm not sure how to help my child. Um, but I think the fact that it's being reflected in the student's ability to, to perform, you know, in multiple ways, but particularly on this test, that there's enough merit to continuing what we're doing. And then, as you said, and I think Barbie makes a good point, that, that, that really make that transition explicit. We have to make sure that that's as smooth as possible, but it's not just about the curriculum materials. That's my, that's the point I'm making. There's a lot that goes into that. Um, and, and different developmental levels of learning. And when, when kids are more ready to have a more, uh, traditional approach that's not as concept, deeply concept-based. But even Paula Utter at the department, like, she'll tell you that, and we heard it today again, the concepts and skills, that's, is, it's about thinking skills and application- And application of knowledge and understanding, problem solving. I mean, that's really where Park is going, that's where the next generation um assessments are going. Performance based tasks that, that have kids draw on what they know, but apply it to real world situations. Show that they can have the flexibility to show that they know what they're doing. So it's a higher level skill. So we, we need to keep adjusting our instruction at all levels.
Oh, interesting.
Okay.
Okay.
Middle school.
Middle school.
Can I ask a quick grade question? And, and it's just cause it, it sort of screams out, um, grade eight science tech- technology.
Yes.
Why on the advanced level, i- if I were to look at, like, all of these charts, they're, they're, you know, there's something of a curve that you can see. The advanced level is by far the smallest of all at the grade eight science tech- technology.
And that was something that we identified, and that was one of the reasons why we built that course in the seventh and eighth grade.
Okay.
Because, yes, in the science technology course. Because we knew that we weren't hitting all the standards that, that really needed to be taught. Um, and so we had to build those courses in order to help support what the expectations were.
So it's more an alignment issue than anything?
And not every student was getting it.
Right.
So that, that will make a difference too.
Yeah, okay.
Trying to figure where it was.
Elementary?
Elementary. Um, from the English Language Arts MCAS assessment Pembroke, seventy-two percent of our fifth grade students score proficient or advanced, fifty-four percent of our fourth grade students.
Oh, hold on, did we do the, did we do science for middle school?
Uh, let's see, did we? So you talked about sixth grade?
Oh, I think I jumped, oh, sorry. Okay, so, so for science at the middle school.
Middle of the third paragraph.
Okay, so this is eighth grade science ELA.
I was looking for one of the.
Wait, we're begin similar to English Language Arts?
Similar to English Language Arts, the mathematics MCAS assessment this year incorporated a hundred percent of the new math frameworks. As for science at the middle school level, forty percent score proficient or advanced. Um, and at this time, what we're trying to do is determine where the changes are coming for science. But also what change happened in the new MCAS test to reflect what the new standards are asking for. So it's really kind of a double pronged approach of looking at that. And so.
We would identify that as something we, that's an area of focus.
For us, absolutely.
Well, I think it has been for some time, right?
Yes, and I think phase one, phase one for us was that new sci- was the new science uh focus in the science course. Um, and for me, I, I'd like to see more STEM capacity built into the middle school. Losing my voice, sorry. I feel like that is something that really does enrich the science learning. And so, um, this year we're starting a new STEM program and uh working through, through that for children. But also, we're looking at um how the science content spirals through the middle school. And the way that it's taught, and really taking a look at how um, what are the materials that we're using? But also, um, how are we looking at the data that we have to determine? Who's teaching um to what capacity and, and what's the depth of what we're teaching at the, at the unit level? Making sure that we're focusing on those, those power standards or those important science standards. So phase one for us was building that course to make sure that we were getting those standards taught. Um, and phase two for us is really analyzing where we are uh within our own content. But also anticipating these new standards that are going to be accepted probably this year in science. So science is kind of an interesting place because it's like straddled between, you know, this year's MCAS, but next year's new standards. Um, and trying to determine where we are in that process.
Because as Michael pointed out, with the, you know, two in advanced. Um, I, I also, you know, highlighted that, but mine also is the needs improvement, the fifteen and needs improvement.
For the science?
For the science.
Yes, one, one of the pieces of analysis that we're doing right now is looking at student open response scores in science, the middle school level.
Yeah.
Because when we really made a heavy focus on that through ELA, but also at the high school level across all contents. We found that um students were typically scoring in the one and two range for open response, and so that's.
Out of.
Out of four.
Okay.
And that was in the past in, in some of those grade levels, but what we're really looking at now is what types of questions are being asked? And how are students responding at our level, at the school level, um, across each grade level for open response? So we're not waiting till eighth grade open response test on the MCAS to figure out where students are with their writing in science. It's really about how are we ensuring that our students are writing across the three grade levels to prepare for when they do have to take this test, you know, at the end of the eighth grade? And so we did that with, with really good success at the other grade levels and other content areas, and we're redoubling our efforts.
Yeah, I don't think the state has been as solid and clear in the science testing as they are in English Language Arts and math, which they've been doing longer. Well, I think, yeah. Cause I, I don't know, but statewide, science isn't as high as statewide.
Statewide, the science.
Yes, I have, you do see quite a difference in the ELA and the math students across, across the board. I'm actually going to.
These kids are only tested like fifth and eighth grade, so it's, and it's cumulative. It's a lot of content.
Yeah.
It's an incredible amount of content to test over these time spans, you know, of a child's life. So it's really, how are we?
I know, I've heard children say, I've taken the test and, I forgot about that, that was so many years ago, and it's certainly a hard test.
That was, I studied that in sixth grade and them being tested on in eighth grade, so it's really a struggle.
Right, and that's part of why we set up the vertical team. You know, in advance of the es- establishment of the standards, knowing that we really needed to get grounded in not only what the standards are now, but what they're projected to be. And really have an opportunity to have people across, you know, the, the discipline at all levels, be able to look at the kinds of questions. Look at, you know, how, how, how are our students preparing on, uh, performing on certain kinds of parts of the test? Looking again at our alignment. I mean, I know at the elementary level that there's need for alignment, that we bought the, uh, the curriculum that we bought several years ago. Because there was concern uh about it, and, you know, the standards have changed. And I think Julie and I would agree that, that, you know, it's, it's, there's some nice things going on in science for elementary students, but it's not a hundred percent lined up to where it's gonna need to be. And I think there'll be some, some changes to the science curriculum, but it doesn't make sense to keep changing your materials until you know what the standards are.
Right, it's, we're in this kind of weird waiting.
Because I've, I've been in that situation.
You know, we're in a holding pen in that way.
I've been in that situation as a curriculum director where, you know, you look at materials and they look beautiful, but you match them up to the standards.
Yeah, it's, it's a challenge. But you know, you can't even think about them until the standards.
But you match them up with the standards and you might see two standards. So you, you have to have time to really devote to that, and the standards change, then you've bought materials that line up to a set of standards that are no longer pertinent. So it is, you know, I think that the preliminary work is definitely being done, but I'm not surprised to see the science scores. Cause statewide, they're, they're low.
Right.
And, and they're high for us at our high school. So something's going wrong, something's going right somewhere. It's just, you know, I don't think the alignment is as tight. I don't think the test is as clear.
I would like to go on to the, to the website and take a look at questions.
No, I know.
And I've looked at all, I've looked at ELA, and I don't know why, because science has always been a concern for me, so.
Yeah, I think this is us.
When I go home, I'm gonna look at the open response.
Good.
You're learning certain content in the sixth grade and then getting tested in eighth, why isn't there that refresher built in to the curriculum? So that you're repeating it.
Oh, you mean why aren't they testing it at, at every grade?
Fifth and eighth.
No, but why isn't just more the curriculum reviewing it?
Well, that, that's one of the things that we do, that we're doing, is creating a series of assessments that we would use across the middle school over time. So that we would know exactly where kids are at each grade level, based on the science that they're taking.
And, and the map, we wanna do the map at the sixth grade science.
Right.
So if that's tied to the standards, then that should give us some interim data. But when you map curriculum, you map it, so you say, if this is what kids need to know and be able to do at eighth grade, then what are we gonna do at seventh? What are we going at six? And the assumption is that they're cumulative and they build. So as Julie's saying, if you take the test in sixth grade, in your seventh grade year, you're working on the standards that you need to be in order to prepare, you know, students for the, for the eighth grade. So we, that's what I'm talking about, when I'm talking about alignment.
Okay.
Even if they don't test at every grade, we, we should have ways to know that our students are making progress on those standards.
And our science vertical team is creating those, what we would call interim assessments, like measures that we would use in district to determine our prog- our progression towards that. And, um, you know, and again, it's, it's six and one half dozen of the other, when you're right straddled over a brand new set of standards. And trying, and waiting for the state to adopt them so that you can kind of, you know, continue on. We know the science and engineering and that, that technology piece is not going away ever. In fact, it's more pronounced in the new standards.
Right.
So we, we're, we were confident with the coursework that we were putting together for middle school on that end. It's how they'll do the biology, the, you know, all of these other components of science that are, that they're, they're, they're fleshing out and we're waiting for.
And, and we do, we do think that we're waiting for. We do think that the standards that the state is floating right now, that they're calling the next generation standards, are probably gonna be the standards. So we're already starting to, you know, kind of look at where are we in relationship to those? Because that's already been through the public comment period and all the layers that they do before they adopt them, and my understanding is people really like them. So I, I think you're going to see that they're, they're gonna be adopted.
Any idea when?
We, I think, I honestly believe that this could happen by January.
Oh, good.
Which would be great.
Yes.
I do. So it's been up for public comment three times, which is great.
Overdue.
And, um, and, and our science department teachers have read through the standards and commented on them. It's most certainly Cerise has read through them, you know, cover to cover and commented on them at great length, I'm sure. Uh, and she'll tell us about it, and, and so it's really um kind of just a waiting game unfortunately. And hopefully it won't be too much after January, because we'd like to use the rest of the school year to really start that, that preparation.
Our infrastructure is poised to do that work. That's, that's where we started it, you know, last year.
All right, and so we will talk about Pembroke. Um, from the English Language Arts standpoint, um, seventy-two percent of our fifth grade students score, score proficient or advanced in ELA. Fifty-four percent of our fourth grade students score proficient or advanced, and sixty-four percent of our third grade students score proficient or advanced in ELA. Um, at Pembroke in mathematics, seventy-two percent of our fifth grade students score proficient or advanced in mathematics. Fourth grade, sixty-one percent of our students score proficient or advanced, and eighty-one percent of our, I'm sorry, that should say third grade, I apologize. And eighty-one percent of our fifth grade students score proficient or advanced in math at Pembroke. And um, basically, what we're finding that, a- as we had said before, as, third grade is, is a challenging year. Um, in the tur- in the sense that it's the first time our students even take the MCAS test. And so it's, it, it's a prolonged experience for them because they're taking it in ELA and then in math later on in the year, and it's brand new. And it's exciting, I think, for some kids who are, have always heard about it and have never been able to really experience that yet. Um, and in fourth grade, it's the first experience students have with writing a long composition. And so that's a different challenge in the fourth grade, and in fifth grade, um, our students take science for the first time. So it's, the elementary school kind of gets all the firsts when it comes to, to MCAS, you know, across all three content areas, if you will. Um, and so what we always do when we get this, you know, district data is try to determine, um, you know, what are our strengths and weaknesses? Where are our gaps in curriculum? Um, how are we assessing students in, in our own everyday work versus what the state is, you know, telling us in terms of data? Most often than not, we're above the state average, you know, across the grade levels and content areas. But, you know, as we talked about, there are certain areas that we know we need to refocus some of our energy and, you know, and try to take a look at how the standards have changed. And what that reflection looks like in the classroom. So do you have any questions for me, aside from that long discussion?
Thank you.
A lot of data, I don't think I don't know that. It is a ton of data, and this is just a preliminary look at it. This is just like two, two inches in. We look at it, at, we, we pull so many things, and we look at, um, all students, we look at, um, the quest, every question. We look at, um, our units and how, you know, our teachers are teaching them and, and the materials that we use. We look at our own assessments, um, we do a lot of work around this. Um, but it also helps us kind of determine, you know, what are the trends that we see over time and what can we project to see? And, and we were very interested to see how we would do against, you know, that hundred percent new framework piece. And, and I think we did really well considering it. It's pretty amazing that it was a fairly seamless transition, except for some areas. You know, that we kind of wondered, would the depth of content really be there, you know, in that assessment? It's been an interesting, um, beginning to do the analysis, but you'll be, uh, hearing from the principals and how they're looking at it with their department heads and their grade levels. And the conversations that we're having, uh, across the school improvement plans and things of that nature. Much more, much more to come.
Just a question for you, when, when, um, Carol, you gave like a synopsis of the year. Um, and when it had said that the district did not meet the targets in special ed, but we did see, we did see them getting better.
We did with the student growth percentages, yes.
Right. Um, so what are you thinking about that?
About the.
Just, I mean, of course, we're glad to see that the, that they're improving.
Right. Well, tha- that's a, a big focus of the work we're trying to do on RTI and engaging, you know, engaging teachers and trying to figure out. Um, okay, so we know who the students are, you know, let's look at what we're currently doing for them. And we're hoping that what, with this RTI, what will happen is, teachers in the classroom will be giving everybody instruction, obviously. And then of those kids that need extra, we'll get a, a second dose. But we just don't wanna give them a second dose of, just to check the box and say, we give you a second dose. We wanna figure out what's gonna be an effective intervention. So we're identifying what are the research-based intervention programs that people are getting success with, with children who fit a certain kind of profile. Around a certain strength or weakness that, that we need to, we need to work with them on. So, so that's the work we're doing. They're doing that in data teams at each school, they're doing it in departments, looking specifically at individual students.
But say we do go to this park next year.
Yep, yep.
And where they don't, uh, where Park, you know, it's been mentioned that the special, the special education students wouldn't.
Maybe would struggle.
Yes. So we're seeing that we didn't meet the target now, like what, what do you think is going to happen?
Well, but, but Julie, I think the ni- the number one thing is, what Julie's talking about, is the standards, right? So the, the, the part, the standards that supposedly Park is going to be keyed off of are the standards that we're working with right now.
Are these standards. Right.
I think what's gonna be challenging for our students in Park is the question types, the way they're asking the questions, the, you know, um. That I think is, and, and being a tech- technology based test, I would think there are those kind of things that I think there's some concerns and worries about. Will special education students be able to make, especially students who have struggles with organizational skills or perceptual issues? So we're just gonna have to do it, student at a time, and try to figure out, you know, what we can do, but.
Well, some of the work that, you know, outside of the vertical teams that John or and I do with the teachers, uh, is definitely to take the same approach of breaking down the MCAS data. But looking at it, and we do this with all the grade levels and all the departments too, is breaking it down to look at not only the content, what's the content that's being asked? But looking at it at the other side, how are the students responding to it? So we have two ways to look at data, and when I pass it out to principals, I always pass it out by the stu- I don't give them this. I give them student information and data to look at student by student. Because I want the vertical teams to look at the content, but I want the schools and the teachers to think about it by student. Because that's, that's how you learn where student strengths and weaknesses are. It's not always looking at the test and reading the questions. It's really looking at the student's history over time, um, how they've responded to assessments like this. And, you know, what's, you know, how are they doing at, at the, at the grade level within the classroom, but also on high stakes assessments like this? So we look at this from a number of different perspectives, and, um, next week is actually our, our week to work with special ed teachers to try to determine. Um, what are some of those, those interventions that we'll be doing based on the data that we have right now on our kids?
And, and I mean, I guess it's the same, I mean, Park is a new assessment, but I think the same worries existed when MCAS came in. How are those students going to do? And I think that what gives me, um, you know, hope, continues to give me hope, is that, um, you know, every, every year, when we look at the kids who receive an, a, an MCAS diploma. Meaning that they had proficiency, you know, unless they're taking an MCAS all test or something like that, that's a little different. But, you know, the average special education student in the district, something's happening depending on what we're doing for them, so that they are getting that diploma. So it tells me that the longer kids are exposed to the standards and good instruction. And we can, uh, identify who's struggling and intervene in an appropriate way, then by the time it's high stakes. They, they're able to show that they can pass the test. So that gives me hope that, you know, it, regardless of what the test is, if we line ourselves up with it. And we don't lose sight of the fact that we know what kids need to know and be able to do, and we make sure they can learn it in interesting and creative ways. and we make sure they can learn it in interesting and creative ways, then, uh, I think they'll do okay. That's the plan.
How much, you talked a lot about student performance and, and I get that that's obviously a priority. How much data is used for teacher effectiveness? Are you able to identify, you know, hey, these, these ten students came up as, as needing improvement or, or morning, whatever it is, and, and they all happen to be in the same class and, and kind of raise the flag that way? Is the data usable in that disaggregating student data I get? Can you do it sort of to classroom, teacher?
That's what the state is doing with the evaluation system.
Is that?
That's, that is a component of the new teacher evaluation system. It's looking at student growth percentile data and determining, um, average student growth over a course of a year with, with a particular teacher.
In with the, right.
So, then the teacher gets to say, okay, here's the data that we see. This is what I'd like to do about that. This is what I'm gonna adapt as a student learning goal. Perhaps, you know, that we're gonna, I'm gonna look at over the next couple of years. Cause you'll have different group, you know, you don't want, it, it's a trend, right? One, one year's not a trend. But years ago, when the state was saying they were going to line up student performance with teacher effectiveness, everybody said, no way, that's never gonna happen. And then, here it is. Um, but, you know, it, it's not an easy connection sometimes because you get a mixed group of, of students. So, it, you've got to figure out how, what's the fair way to do that? Cause otherwise, you'd have teachers who'll all say, I want all the easy kids, right? You know, so, um, I think that, where the state's still trying to figure that out. And this whole DDM that you're gonna ta- we're gonna talk to you about, that's part of how the state has sort of filled that gap. That, you know, you can design assessments that you're going to use to measure growth. So, it's not just about MCAS or student growth, cause not every teacher has the ability to use those.
Right. We're only talking about English teachers, math teachers and science teachers here. You know, aside from elementary teachers. But, um, you know, it does that to certainly not the, the entire faculty that we have in each school. So, what does that, what does growth look like in music? What does growth look like in math versus math?
And the, the teacher evaluation framework is based upon, you know, as you've seen it, standards, four, four major standards, four major, um, well, I guess there are standards and benchmarks. And then there's the student growth on top of that. So, you know, it's, it's part of the equation, but it's not.
It's not the equation.
It's not the equation.
Certainly fair.
And I think that's, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
But we don't want ineffective teachers in the classroom. And if for four years in a row, you saw, you know, a particular teacher who's, you know, had just not been able to demonstrate growth, you know, that would be cause for the te- concern for the teacher and for the administrator.
Right.
So, it, that's why I say you have to, just like MCAS, you can't form trends unless you have multiple years of data. Same thing happens here.
I'm sure we'll be back again with more information. When the departments and all the great levels have a chance to, uh, break this down more. And that's what they're doing right now. We're in phase two, I would say of this. Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks Julie. And Donna's thing is very short. It's just really an information thing. So, along with all this wonderful thing, we, we do have to pay attention to compliance. And, um, uh, so, every six years, the state comes and does a very extensive coordinated program review.
There should be just one there.
Where they look at special education, civil rights, um.
English language learners.
English language learners. And, um, we had our, apparently six years ago, we had our last audit. And, um, had some findings, which we, um, put actual pla- plans in place for. And then had to sub- submit interim measures to show that we were mo- making progress. And, um, as I think the last one I brought to you, there was one tiny little thing which Donna took care of. So, I want you to be aware it's coming forward though for the next round.
Which is that, so, you, you shared this letter, um, right?
The letter from them?
The letter, yeah.
Yeah.
The DOE, DEC. And, um, so, you know, we're, it's time for us to have this program quality assurance.
Yep.
View. And then they have a web-based monitoring system, which I just, it just kind of like, wait a minute. Like, when I first read it, I was like, so you're sending a team of people to the school?
They generally do.
This, you wanna tell you all about it?
This year they're just saying, answer our questions online?
No, no, no.
Wish.
Yeah, you should be so lucky, believe me. So, it's really a core day program review is going to be conducted by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school year. However, the great part of the work is really starting now that we have to, you know, go through. And as, um, the superintendent had stated, it isn't just special education, but it's also civil rights in the English lan- Language Learners Program. So, the first step will be doing some training and that will include Joan Laporto, Wes and myself going to that training. So, what are the elements? One thing that I brought to share with you is this packet is just the special education criteria that we have to go through. So, I thought while I was talking, I would just pivot you to kind of take a peek at.
Come through.
And there's a document for English Language Learners as well as for the, um, civil rights as well that we have to step through. And for each one, there's eighteen, uh, set of criteria that we're going to be measured against. For the English Language Learners, twenty-six for the civil rights and there's fifty-nine for the special education. And that's all coming out of the federal and state laws. And that's the whole compliance piece that the state does and comes in for. So, within the fifty-nine, they've separated it out into nine different sections, which includes assessment of students, which of course is primary importance in special education. Student identification and program placement. That means when we assess the student, are we appropriately identifying where their educational disability might be and establishing an appropriate individual program for them? Parent and community involvement, and that includes our CPAC. The curriculum instruction we're providing them. Student support services in addition to just the academic piece. Faculty, staff, administration, are we providing appropriate professional development so that people understand how to work with the students in all of the different areas? What are our school facilities look like? Um, are the rooms equivalent to a general education classroom? For one thing. Uh, program plan and evaluation. When we plan our program, what does it look like? What is the criteria that we use? How do we know if a student belongs in there? How do we evaluate the progress of the program to make sure it's appropriate and it's actually doing what we think it's doing? And of course, record keeping, data collection, all of those pieces. So, that's what we're measured up against. So, what is the method of the review? The first thing starts with exactly what you were talking about, which is the self-assessment phase. And that's the web-based monitoring piece. So, we have a whole list of criteria that we have to look at, including file reviews to look at exactly how our, you know, procedures are working. Are the teachers following the procedure manual that we have in the district? Are they following the appropriate paperwork, giving appropriate notice? Are the assessments being done at appropriate time? All of those different pieces. So, it's going through the different students' files and making sure that all of that's in place. And really, the nice part about that is it gives an opportunity for the teachers and ourselves to kind of sit down and say, are we addressing all of the new standards that may have come out or the changes in the laws? For example, the bullying law. Are we making sure we're covering when a child is on the spectrum? Are we looking at bullying and really asking all those specific questions at the team meeting? So, it gives us a way of, you know, self-checking, which is nice. Um, so, that's the first page, the first part is basically the self-assessment piece. And that really will take a whole year to do that whole piece. Um, included in that is a review of the documentation about the operation of the programs. So, I had presented to you the document that had all the different programs that we have in place, um, the different levels, sub-separate to inclusionary, what the criteria is to enter the program and exit the program. So, they'll evaluate, Desi will come in and evaluate all of those pieces and, you know, make sure that we're really adhering to what we say that we're doing. Um, they're going to conduct interviews. There'll be interviews with the administration, with staff, both general ed and special ed, paraprofessionals, and they'll be interviewing parents and CPAC members as well. Again, they want to make sure that we're really following all the laws, we're being inclusive of everybody, including our parents, that our parents have input in the types of programs that we're doing. Um, they're also gonna send surveys out. They'll send them out to some of the older students, send them out to the parents and send some out to the staff as well. Then they'll conduct an observation of our programs. So, they'll go in, they'll observe the actual programs, again, all the different levels that we have. They'll take a look at our facilities. I know that a couple of years ago with Pembroke, which is part of the reason we're building the new school, we had some significant issues with regard to having classes up in the loft in the library or smaller rooms. So, we're really, um, looking at that and we've made some big changes across all of the schools to ensure equity there.
School renovations, that'll, will go a long way toward dealing with some of the things Donna's talking about in terms of facilities.
And I want to make sure that if we have a program for, you know, children on the spectrum, for example, that we have the appropriate type of sensory, uh, devices, whether it be trampoline or, you know, the program appropriate materials. The same thing with social emotional program. What are we providing for them? Do we have access to what the students need? So, that, you know, that's all gonna take place in like, between this year and the first half of the following fifteen, sixteen school year. After that, we'll have an exit interview. So, Desi will basically sit down with myself, uh, Mrs. Laporto, the superintendent, and basically say, here's kind of our first impressions and here's what we're thinking and sort of give us a heads up of what they're thinking. And, you know, things that maybe we can jumpstart fixing or, you know, if nothing's wrong, how wonderful would that be? So, they'll provide that. Forty-five days later, we'll get a written draft and we'll read the draft. And if there's any mistakes or errors or misconceptions, we have ten days to respond to them and then we'll have the final report. When we get the final report, there's going to be ratings because we love to rate everything in education. So, the ratings are anywhere for each of those different criteria standards. So, there'll be fifty-nine ratings for special education, for example. And it might be commendable, implemented, implementation in progress, partially implemented, not implemented or non-applicable. And based on that, they'll give us a little narrative. So, for things that are partially implemented or not implemented, that should be, they're gonna cite why they gave us that rating and what they expect us to do in order to fix that and make sure that we're really in compliance with the law. So, once we have that, we're going to have to write a corrective action plan. And as the superintendent had mentioned just a few minutes ago, part of what we did from our mid-cycle is we had one piece based on a new regulation that we had to put in place. So, that was our correction action plan. I wrote that piece. We uploaded it and we're all set in that area. Okay, so what do we need to do for the next year for preparation? Well, the first thing is go to the web-based monitoring system. We have to, you know, learn how to conduct that. It's, it's pretty multifaceted. I don't know if you've used it before, but like any database, there's a lot of different layers. And so, the three of us will attend that. We're going to do the record review, which is gonna be very systematic in each of the schools and allow each of the teachers to sort of go through all of their own students' records and really organize them and make sure everything's where it needs to be and that, you know, they're really adhering to what our procedure manual says. Um, we have to develop the school district profile. And what that means is based on the type of input that Desi is looking for, we're going to take all of that information that we have and create a report that sort of talks about who our students are and why we're meeting the specific needs that we're meeting. And really, what they're looking for is not just for us to meet the standards of the law, but to exceed them and to tell them where and how and why we're exceeding them. That's what they're really looking for. Um, and again, the documentation that we have, so they're gonna want a copy of our program booklet. They're gonna want a copy of our policies and procedures manuals that we have and, uh, review all of those pieces.
Not just for special ed, for all the policies that you, that you as a school committee put together for things like, for civil rights, things like harassment policies and all that. And we, and we actually did very well on that the last time, the civil rights we did. And what we, where we had gaps, we've filled them now. So, I'm actually thinking that, you know, I mean, we have some things we're working on, some things that we need to do. But my sense is that a lot of the procedural kind of things that weren't in place before, some issues with the facilities that were issues before. I think those things, when they come, will, you know, will be taken care of. I think it's always around the programs and the parent satisfaction and, you know, are we compliant with, you know, all of those? I mean, those are the things that you always are working on.
Right. And we've done a lot of work there, as you know, in the last, you know, so many years, last few years, we were bringing in people to, um, provide some assistance in the development of these programs and the continuation of the programs, establishing the entrance and exit criteria, uh, bringing Walker partnerships in to do an evaluation of special education Georgetown alone. That's a criteria that the state and the, uh, federal government have. In fact, we'll be looking at bringing them in again. Every couple of years, you're supposed to bring an outside evaluator in to look at your programs and provide you with some feedback. So, I think really a lot of what they're looking for, we already have ready and we've been actively working on it. I feel pretty good about it. And again, it's just kind of a nice opportunity to sit down and, you know, really sit down and look at the work that everyone's doing. And, you know, have the teachers be able to really do a self-assessment of themselves. You know, am I following everything? And it's not, if they're not, it's not intentional. It's just there's so many layers of paperwork in all three of these areas that just to make sure everybody understands the procedure.
So, I wanted you to be aware that it's, that it's gonna happen. And then we'll talk to you about the following year. We have a high school accreditation. So, it, it's, we have a few years now where we're gonna be, you know, working on some compliance things that just are required.
It's so interesting. I think that, I, I wonder how, um, or I guess my impression is the general public doesn't understand the level of accountability that our schools are held to, to state and federal, the state and federal government and how much of the work we do comes from that guidance and, and that expectation of accountability.
And we actually really like having the standards. I, you know, I mean, I, I always like to know, if you have an expectation, what is it? And then let me work with it. And so, we like that, you know?
Because I think what happens is parents have expectations and they wonder why the school isn't living up to their expectation. And you can't, a school, uh, can't meet every individual parent's expectation. But we do have these, and it's interesting to see the ways that we work to meet those.
Thank you, Donna. Very helpful.
Okay.
Donna, can you just, I just have a question about the letter that was in here.
Okay, what, the, um, is that the letter?
The exemplar, um.
Oh, is that the one for the parents, that you'd invite the parents?
Yeah. That's from the mid-cycle review. That's the one area that we had partially implemented.
So, this is, okay. So, that was the one, right?
Right. So, that's separate from, this is coming up. Now, this is gonna be the full, every six-year piece. That document is from the mid-cycle, which about the third year, you do a mid-cycle to make sure that, one, you're still following in compliance and two, that whatever you had for your, um, progress that you needed to do, that you're really continuing to work on those efforts. So, the one piece was the new regulation with regard to students or parents who decide to withdraw their parental permission for special education services. So, we needed to include that very explicit piece of documentation where we counsel parents to say, we understand it's your right to rescind your, you know, services for your child. However, we want to counsel you as to why we don't think that's the best decision for your child's free and appropriate public education. Make sure they get their procedural safeguard, so there's a, a process. So, we just put that into the procedure manual, sent that off to, um, the State Department.
So, this is when we have recognized a child that's in need of special education services. The parent is saying to you, I don't want those.
Or they have it currently.
Once, when they have them currently.
Okay. And then they say, okay, I, I no longer want them to receive those services.
Right. I don't want the services anymore. For whatever reason, they decide they wanna rescind permission for us to provide those services.
The team might be still recommending the services though.
Correct. Right. So, we have to be clear that we're not telling you to.
No. In the, the time I've been here, the few years I've been here, it's happened twice.
It's usually the other way around. I want more services for my child. Why can't my child get this and this? And this is what, at least what I hear.
And they were very different situations, why? But it's only happened in two occasions, so.
But it's procedural, we have to have.
Yeah.
We have to have it in place, so.
Of course.
So, that's that letter that's in there.
Okay. I guess that was probably why I was so confused. I'm like, why would, why would a parent want to?
Yeah, I, I asked Donna if we could just, uh, put it.
Yeah, I asked Donna if we could just put it in there, be just as evidence for you, because it shows that, you know, we were in compliance.
Yeah, but you're right, it doesn't happen very often. And, you know, part two of that actually is by the end of February, we have to do a review of those files that the parent has rescinded their permission. I don't think I'm going to have a file to review, quite frankly. I would be surprised if I did, so. So that's the second part of that letter.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Appreciate it.
Okay, uh, next up is the financial report.
Yeah.
We have a lot.
You'll go first.
We have the financial report.
So the, um, the report you got was dated the beginning of October.
Yeah.
And it was after I had done the transfers. So, we pretty much settled all the salary lines out. That was the majority of the transfers, and I think if you, the bottom line might be a bit deceiving. It says we have available budget seven-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand.
Yep.
That's for all non-encumbered lines, so our substitute teacher lines, back in Anderson's facility lines, you know, his, he still has like sixty-five thousand dollars left on his maintenance line. So those are all things that, um, oh, please. And, so I'm feeling very confident this year. On the first page, you'll notice that, as I spoke to a few weeks ago, we're going to tap special ed expenses right into Circuit Breaker right from the get-go. So, as you can see, except for transportation monies, the special ed tuition out monies are either all expended or mostly encumbered for current placements. So the next placement that Donna has will be going right to Circuit Breaker. And so I probably should every month or every quarter, give you an update on the Circuit Breaker account, so you know where we stand with Circuit Breaker. We tried not to do, we tried to do it differently last year. It's more work for my office to charge to Circuit Breaker, but then at the end of the year, if we have money left in subs or whatever, we don't want to use Circuit Breaker, so then we have to make a lot of changes. So we have to, like, take the expenses out of Circuit Breaker and put it back into budget. It's a lot more work. But I felt like last year, every time I gave you the reports, I said, oh, don't look at all the minuses. That will go to Circuit Breaker. So I think it's better to manage it this way and just give us, we'll have a little bit more work at the end of the year, but it's okay. So I don't know if you have any questions about anything. I mean, there's some lines in the negative. Principals still need to make some transfers. I noticed when I was looking through it, it looks like our lines got reversed. So your, her salary line has too much money, and mine has, or my support staff has too little money. And it's the same exact number, so it looks like the transfer was made incorrectly. But most of the, um, most of the negative accounts are in the school budgets, and the principals just need to make transfers to cover, so. I don't know if you have any questions on anything. I feel really confident this year. We're not having a budget freeze.
Oh, wow, that's good.
I feel very confident. I mean, Donna has, we struggled the first couple of years because we didn't, the first year, we didn't build the budget, and the second year, there were some placements made that Donna didn't know about, so, or, you know, commitments or whatever. So it was hard to get our hands on special ed, but we built that special ed budget kid by kid. And every change that comes, Donna sends it right over to me. So I feel like we have a much better handle on it, and I think that, last year I was worried. We froze the budget. It was unfair to the principals that they weren't allowed to spend their money. So, I feel confident this year.
That's good.
Yeah, I'm happy.
Well, I think the way, if you do it this way, too, it might be a little more difficult at the end of the year, but I think it's eas, it's, it's communicates to us better.
Way better.
Where.
Way better. And I can, I can just do the same kind of printout with the Circuit Breaker, so you can see where we stand with Circuit Breaker.
Yeah.
Remind me, who's on the budget and finance subcommittee?
Me.
Okay, so we probably should get, pretty soon get a meeting to talk about some budget priorities and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah. Okay, um, the next piece is just, we had a, our kickoff meeting, finally, for the Pearly Roof Project. So, Carol's included in here a timeline that the architect gave us. They'll be doing lots of the work, working with Mike, and they will be getting all the bids ready and everything, but they won't be sending them out until right after the first of the year, because we're not going to do the work until school gets out in June. So, I'm happy about that. I'm not happy that we're not going to have a project, and we're going to have summer programs, and, but the architect's well aware of it. He said it will go in the bid package, so the construction company will know. Yeah, he was great.
And it's safe to leave it until then?
Yes, oh yeah, we, it's not a safety issue. I mean, it's really been just getting the, the process in place. For example, today, the only place we had leaks was at the high school. We didn't have any leaks at Pearly, so.
There were leaks last week at Pearly, though, in the, in the gym.
I don't know what that, was that a pipe?
I wonder if that's that place, by the heat, by the event? I don't know exactly where they were, but I know it was in the gym.
There, there is a, there is a little area where the, because that's the new, where the new connects to the old. And sometimes in that flashing, there can be a little bit of.
I didn't hear any leaks at Pearly today. High school, multiple leaks.
But we'll, we'll look into that.
Thank God we're getting a new roof.
You know, the, the dentil along the.
That needs to be replaced.
Right, and it's not going to fall down on anyone.
No, he walked the whole.
I'm sure he walked, right?
He came, he came, walked the whole building last week. They went up into the double ladder.
Yeah.
You go two ladders. I didn't go up, but, went up one ladder and then. They said that was bad, but then the next ladder was even worse. I think you might have gone up there before.
Yes, I have. Probably when the roof collapsed, right?
No, this is in the Pearly Roof. This is up above us.
Oh, like the, the original.
Yeah, right, I mean, yeah.
So, no, he walked the whole building and.
Yeah, that, that, that really just needs to be, it's not, I don't think there's a lot of rot. It really needs to just be scraped and heated and, it's going to be very nice when it's all done.
I'm sure.
Well, when we had the.
Pearly will be in wonderful shape.
The meeting last week about the soil, that, when the DEP gentleman came, I kept on hearing the, um, the water going into the, they had buckets, so you could just hear it, hitting the bucket.
In the bucket.
So the auditorium had some leaks.
Well, that's where we're getting a new roof.
So, the next is a change order for Quirk. Now, you've signed one, but that was the old one you had already voted, Barbie, the one you handed me when I walked in, for thirty-eight-hundred and thirty-eight-twenty.
That was this one today. That's this one.
Right, but I have another change order here. This is for the two additional light poles, and removing the ledge along the baseline.
Well, see, here's, here's what gets confusing. First, they give you it, they give, break it out on that kind of a paper, and we all sign it. Then, I guess, the official signatures are on these AIAAs. So we might have thought we signed it on that, and we did, but this is the one that counts.
But that's for a different amount than that. That's why I'm confused.
How much is that one?
Which change?
This is change, this is change order number three.
Yeah, there's only three.
It was for two additional light poles.
Yes.
For forty-four thousand, and then remove ledge along first baseline for seven thousand. So the total of this change order is fifty-one oh four five.
Right, right. Um, but the, the GAA is paying for those lights. So they're going to give money to the town.
I say, I don't remember that amount.
Me, this ended up on my desk.
There was four poles in the budget, and then they were going to, that's right. The GAA was going to, to buy those two. And actually, tomorrow's Friday, right, they're supposed to be installed tomorrow. Well, that's the one. I went to the, the meeting.
Yeah, you left it on my desk.
Yeah, the other, whatever.
Borrow some glasses?
Thank you. I went to the meeting on Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Yeah, Wednesday. And this is the, there, there's only three chan, change orders. So this is the, this is the latest change order. And it, there, Lindsay asked us to sign three copies, or, you know, the committee to sign three copies. The other two change orders have already been approved, right?
Right.
Yeah. So that's the only one left, Barbie, so far.
That one?
This one.
So we still, even though the GAA is paying for that?
Well, again, this was, this was brought up at the meeting. Everybody at the meeting believed this was the right total. So, the only way the GAA would not pay for that would be if the soil, that I'm going to talk to you about, the moving, if that budget that's left in the, as a credit in there does not get fully used, then they'll, they'll try to apply some of that money to the lights.
Okay.
So this is, this Quirk agrees with this, Lindsay agrees with this. So, they've all checked the budget, it's all worked out. So whatever they've put here is what needs to be, needs to be paid, because the work will have been done. Right, because they already did the two days that, digging in that ledge, and then the installation for the lights. Yeah, I'm a little surprised at the lights there, but I, I didn't ask the question there. But there, everybody was in agreement that those need to be signed, so it's all in the, it's definitely in the budget. Okay, so. So everybody's in agreement to pay that? Do you have to take a vote on that, Barbie? You probably need a vote, right?
Yeah, can I have that back?
Yep.
Three.
I know, I don't know why it says number eight.
I know, because you can see that, we're working between two different kinds of documents with the same information. I don't know why they give it to me and ask me to sign it when it's a different.
It says change order three.
Okay, that's the, the official change order. There's been three official change orders.
But this is actually being paid to Quirk.
Yes.
Right?
Yep.
If this just happens to be the.
I don't know.
Okay, so, um, the chair will entertain a motion to approve change order three dated October sixteenth, twenty-fourteen, to Quirk.
Construction.
Quirk Construction in the amount of fifty-one thousand, forty-five dollars as presented. Should I say what it, to install two additional light poles and remove ledge along the first baseline?
So moved.
Second. Does anyone have any discussion on that? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Hey.
Thank you.
I'm going to go a little out of order right now, because the, next up, it says Green Seal invoice approval, and then on F, Quirk Construction invoice approval. As I think I told you last time, they have changed the way they're having me do this, and I have to do a warrant sheet for them, so I put them, I put them both together. So, this is what needs to be approved, and the school committee, three members have to sign off it.
Okay.
So that's Quirk's second invoice, and this is the completion of the original contract with Green Seal. But we, but we will, we will have, we do have another work order.
Yes.
For the time he's been in October.
Did they send that to you?
Work order four.
Okay, okay. Because I asked him for that copy, because we, remember, we couldn't find up to where the work was.
Okay, so we have to approve this?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm so glad we're going to have six lights. Very excited about that.
Yep. Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve, should I just, I can do them together, right?
Yes.
Okay, invoice number five-three-one dash oh-three to Quirk Construction in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and twenty-five cents, as well as invoice number eight-nine-one-one to Green Seal Environmental in the amount of nine-thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-six dollars and fifty cents, totaling one-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and seventy-five cents, as presented.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Thank you. Now, now I'm confused on this one. So, we had two proposals from Green Seal. This says, this one I had in the packets was work order four. I was thinking that this was the additional monitoring that needed to take place, because they had only given us the thirty days. That, that original proposal was nineteen thousand. It was for that thirty days.
Right, and this is the, the one that we.
That you just approved through this warrant. That was the balance of that original contract. But he has been there for much of October, and that was the original, when we talked about our budget, that was the original maybe thirteen thousand dollars more, because they got stuck drilling and everything got so delayed.
Right.
So that was one, and he's been working it, and I'm expecting to get an invoice from him. But then he gave you a proposal for the movement of the new, the.
The big pile.
Big pile.
The excess. The one that's going to be ruled.
And I.
That's what this is doing.
That's that one, so I don't have his other one.
We don't have his other one.
No.
This is for, this is a proposal from Jim Lucker from Green Seal. If we, his, his contract ended last Friday, so if we wanted him to continue to monitor the dust while we move the big pile, then this is what he said he would charge to have that happen. In talking with Jim, we discussed waiting until we found out what the soil testing was and soil readings were in that, in the pile. And, because it didn't make sense if, if it wasn't high, why would we hire somebody to do additional dust monitoring? So those results did come back. There, they did three tests. Um, one was, remember, the residential standard, basic is twenty, concerning is usually forty and up. One of the three samples tested below twenty, nineteen and change. And one tested around twenty-two, and the other one was twenty-five. So in my opinion, I don't think those warrant additional costs for monitoring. I wouldn't recommend we do it. I don't think the architect's recommending we do it, but it's clearly up to the committee. Again, I, I, I think that it's not necessary. I, I think, given what we learned from the consultant at the last meeting, naturally occurring arsenic. Now, now, having said that, because we don't want to alarm anybody, and we want to take all the precautions that we might want to consider, we won't have somebody monitoring the movement of that soil, but we will cap it with clean fill. Even though these wouldn't necessarily warn, warrant it, we had already planned when we moved the soil to cap it with clean topsoil, so that there wasn't any doubt, question, concern.
And it's moving to that site on, at the high school that you sent us.
That's correct. It would be, we, we, yeah, I put the letter in here so you can see that I was trying to inform the, um, the neighbors. And my understanding is that, I don't know if they did it today, because it was really pretty yucky, but I, this, the end of this week, Peter Durkey and some of his crew, and Mike and some of Mike's crew are going in, they're going to clear, clear the brush and whatever needs to be removed. And then they'll, they'll start, I believe, I believe on Monday. They're waiting, we were waiting for a proposal from Quirk, because if Quirk can, has money in the budget left, because we do have a credit. We didn't have to move as much of the bad dirt, so there's like eighty-seven thousand dollars in a credit in the dirt removal lines. And so we're, we're looking to see what it would cost, what, and it probably, I didn't check my emails yesterday. It's probably in my email, but we're talking about if, if well within that seventy-eight thousand dollars, Quirk, we could pay Quirk to get somebody to come in with all those big trucks and just move it once, dump it, compact it, grade it, and then, um, cap it. That would make sense for everybody. You know, it's just a big job. There's thirty-five hundred yards of, of soil there, which was, it's a lot.
Thousand dollars is also a lot.
But I think one of the things that will be nice about this, and it was an unintended consequence, is when the dirt goes up there, it's going to basically extend the, the flat fields, probably out six to eight additional feet. And it'll all be seeded and, you know, made nice. But the, this would be Jim's proposal to monitor the dust.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
The first question is, you sent out an email asking, you know, opinions.
Yes.
To, to several people. I think I was the only one.
You were the only one that I saw respond. I did speak to one by phone today.
Okay, so I didn't know if they just responded to you, but what was their take? I said no. I said I did not feel that.
Yes, they had the same feeling.
Okay.
They had the same, you know, if it had come back a hundred or even in the eighties, I think everybody would be like, ah, you know, maybe be a little more cautious. But Jim's called me like three times, because he's feeling very strongly that he thinks, you know, we, we should.
Jim.
Jim Lucker, you know, because, I mean, he, he gets paid to do that. I mean, he's an environmental guy, you know?
He feels he should be monitoring?
He feels anytime we're moving soil, if there's anything higher than twenty, that there should be a monitor. But that's not necessarily what was substantiated by the gentleman from the DEP. Actually, the dirt we're moving right now is pretty wet, so.
Right, not much dust is going to be, no, it's going to be more mud.
But anyway, I, I wanted to obviously bring it to the committee's attention, and. But anyway, I, I, I wanted to obviously bring it to the committee's, uh, attention and, um, you know, see what your thoughts were on it.
All right, so the other question that I had then is, has anybody responded to your letter, any of the butters?
Mike hasn't heard anything and neither have I.
And you handled it, they went in the mailbox.
Yes, what happened is, um, uh, once I, you know, I did the letter, and I wanted, I think I had Tuesday I got it done because I wanted to make sure that it, at least a couple of days before any work would potentially be done, so that it wasn't like after the fact, yeah, oh yeah, you're telling me now. Um, and so Mike went over and he put it, physically put it into the mailboxes of the folks. And, you know, as you read the letter, it gave contact information if anybody was concerned about it.
So you haven't heard from anybody?
No, and, and if people contact me, I did say that I would tell them what the results were if they had any concerns.
So the next one is, if Quirk is able to move that with the credit that we have. Are those big trucks able to get up that? Okay, because my big truck, I drove up there the other day.
That's a good question.
My truck had a hard time getting around that shed in the back.
Well, they, again, they, they put, they're, they were asked to put together, um, we gave them a scope of work and they were asked to itemize each individual aspect of that. Uh, right after we had the meeting where we talked about this, they went, they were, all went up and they walked the site, you know, they all knew exactly, so. I think if, if they couldn't do it, they certainly would've said that right from the beginning, they, they were all well aware of, you know.
Where it is and how to get up there.
Yes, right.
I'd like to be there when they do it. Okay.
So I just looked through all my emails to see if I could find Jim Luker's.
Yeah.
Work order to cover this period, I can't, so tomorrow I'll email him and ask him to send it, cause he's gonna be sending me an invoice.
No.
I. Yeah, I actually had a, I had emailed him, um, when Lindsay asked me about it, so he didn't, I, again, he might've responded today, but if he didn't respond today. Yeah, a little reminder doesn't hurt, cause I, but I just did it, like I'm gonna say three days ago.
So I might come to the committee in two weeks with the bill and the work order.
Right.
And have you sign both of them at the same meeting.
Right.
Is the, the, the extra thirty-five hundred yards of, of soil, is that within the realm of, like was, I know you said there was a miscalculation or it felt like a miscalculation.
I know, I asked Lindsay about that.
Was that, i- is that within the realm of, of acceptable miscalculation or did something get screwed up?
She, she, well, nobody said they screwed up.
Well. Shocking.
Lindsay did have a very articulate explanation about how, um, how they, it had to do with how they anticipate, what, what kinds of dirt they anticipated. And there was, they anticipated less dirt that had the arsenic levels in it that had to be removed, and then this ended up being more. Because of how they had to, I guess how deeply they had to go with this wall.
It was a huge miscalculation.
The wall was huge.
Like for all the geotechnical work that went into it, I.
They didn't really have as many borings as you might think, and I think that was part of the challenge, you know. Cause it's always cost, right, like how many, how many borings do people want to afford and, um, but, you know, I know there was discussion about, you know, well, would the arch, you know, would the architectural firm, um, be held responsible for it or, uh, you know, Quirk didn't have all the, the dirt moved within the four weeks that was in his contract, so is, is there some kind of penalty to them? It all gets very complicated, but they couldn't move forward and get the dirt off if there was ledge that.
Right.
You know, we had to dig out before, so, you know.
I know, but the tough part is.
I mean, everybody's working hard.
It's, I know they are.
Yeah, it's just hard.
And it looks great, you know, every day that I go over there, I see it, but the project was, had such a, um, tight budget.
Yes.
So when you see that and you're saying, wow, okay, we've had all these change orders, we've had to have machines out there, extra days. It just does seem like it was a miscalculation and it could've been avoided.
Yeah. Yeah, so. Yeah, I think the dirt, the dirt was over, that, a lot of things were overestimated in the dirt department.
Mm-hmm.
And underestimated in, in other aspects of the dirt department. But, you know, I'm, I, I know, I know I could get, uh, you know, a more, a more, um, an articulate answer to that question from Lindsay because I already heard it.
Maybe she could put it on paper.
I was gonna say, nothing else, just a, just a challenge rather than just, I, I would, I would prefer an answer rather than a, oh, we added wrong. Sort of.
I don't think it was.
And I'm not, I'm not like added wrong, but it, it just feels a little bit like a.
Yeah, I'll ask.
Well, we made a thirty-five hundred yard error.
We'd like to have an understanding of why this miscalculation took place.
I know, because the original amount, it was thirty-five cents a yard to remove it.
Yep.
Right?
I think originally, yes.
That's how much it would cost, so that was like.
It's fifty-three, it's fifty-three dollars a yard, you know, to, to remove the, the bad soil, I believe.
All right, well, was it, when we first discussed this, discussed this, it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollar amount.
If we didn't keep it on site.
Right. Right, no, and we're lucky that we.
Pennies on the dollar if we keep it.
So that's what I'm saying, if we couldn't, if we didn't have this location to put it in the upper fields, we'd be in trouble.
Yes, we would.
We would've had to go onto the town.
Cause it can't stay there, it has to go.
To ask for more funding. Yeah, it, it really could've been a huge mess.
Yeah, right now, I don't think we're gonna have, it's on, I, I wrote to you in the email, I, I, you know, I don't, I don't think there's gonna need to be an article on Monday.
Good, to do that, you know, let's keep our fingers crossed, but, um, you know, a lot, I just wanna find out, I know they said to, if we just had Quirk move the dirt to the upper field.
It would be twenty-one thousand dollars. But if we want them to, you know, compact it and grade it and, and, and cap it, then he was gonna give us a price for that and then we were gonna be able to look at it and say, okay, you know, but we knew we had the seventy-eight thousand dollar wiggle room, but nobody wants to get to seventy-eight because who knows? I mean, we're getting to the point where there's little that can go wrong.
Well, at one time, we only had five thousand dollar wiggle room.
Yeah, uh, no, um, but yes, but that was before the calculations on the soil.
Right, but still.
But you're right, oh yeah, we were, by the skin of our teeth, so for a moment in time.
So where are we getting the clean soil to cap it?
We actually have, the clean soil is at the highway garage. Peter Durkey had moved, well, he has a hundred and fifty yards, but now that this isn't, um, a large arsenic reading, you don't have to do the two feet.
Okay.
You know, so.
So he has enough that will cover.
So we believe he has enough to cover it. Worst case scenario, we have to, believe it or not, after we gave all that loam to the Pembroke project, we might have to buy a little, well, I don't know if we can take it back, cause I think they got a credit, so.
Isn't that funny, you'll have to buy it, no.
But I don't, I don't think that's gonna happen, I think that the, the people who are handling this, you know, are all, you know, in coordination and they all know what they're doing and, you know, the building inspector's happy and the conservation agents happy. So, we, we made sure everybody was, that, that had, you know, an interest and an opinion on this, got to weigh in.
Okay, so what is your, are you.
What do you think?
All fine about not having Green Seal come and monitor this?
Definitely fine with that.
Yes.
I am, enough to listening, yeah.
Yes. Okay, so we will, we will not.
Okay.
Okay, so, while we're still in my department, do you wanna do the C I P?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, you wanna do that? Sure, let's do it. I sent them an email, I copied you on it, I think.
Yeah, I don't, is there a copy of that email in here, cause now I don't have.
There might not be.
Okay, I can pull it up in my phone, so I can have it.
You know, and I didn't think to put my copy in here, um.
You sent me an email?
I copy, I think I copied you on it, I sent it, I know, I sent it to the committee yesterday, because I, I knew we were gonna have to add a couple of things.
I've seen that.
So I can, I can tell you that, um, the first thing that Mike, um, uh, is suggesting is.
Replacement of the door.
The replacement of the door, so, you know, as you're going into the high school, not that, we're not talking about the main door, we're talking of the one you go down the side there. Um, we have really been trying to shore that door up.
Which one down the side?
Well, we're, we're, it, like where the middle school kids would love to be able to go in. You know, so like if you go up.
If you go.
Go, go up past the front door and you're heading out toward the buses turn around, that door right there.
On the right, like past Peter's window?
Yeah, like past Peter, yeah, it's, it's, it's rotted out and, um, there's just nothing more we can do about it. So, we consider that kind of a health and safety kinda thing. And the threshold is, is, it's a water comes in and it's damaging the floor and it's just not, it's just not in good shape. It's outlived its useful life, let's say that. Um, so that would be the first priority we'd like to have you think about.
Fifty thousand?
Yeah, he said it was fifty, yeah. Yeah, and then, um, I know, doesn't that seem like a lot? I think it has, I think it has to do with, um, not only framing it, but there's the glass windows on the side that would have to be replaced.
It's a whole.
Piece of, of, windows and door and the whole frame, yeah, so threshold. Yeah, so that, that was, um, that was the first priority. Uh, second priority is some, something that, um, we, we anticipate we're going to need because, uh, the Pembroke project's gonna, you know, be, come done. And we, we, they, they, they're putting a concrete slab and power, so we actually, there'll actually be power there. But in the budget, there was never included any kind of a shed or any kind of a building.
So the concrete slab was there, but nothing to go on?
Well, cause I think they were thinking that eventually somebody was gonna put something there and wasn't gonna come out of the building project, so obviously the district would be interested.
But how come it wouldn't have come out of the building project?
Mon, just, it gets down to the, to the bottom line.
The state just doesn't see that as.
Oh, so when we went through at those meetings and.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I, I, I think it doesn't get reimbursed either.
It doesn't get reimbursed.
I think that was part of it.
So, yeah, so, so that's what Mike would like to, uh, recommend, that way, you know, because we also have everything stored right now in a pod. And there's really, you don't wanna put one of those pods in the beautiful, so we have to say x-nay to the pod. But we have to have a place to put the equipment.
Right, so there's no place to put the lawnmowers or the snow blowers and you can't keep them inside, there's no, there's no room in the building anyway, but you can't legally keep them inside.
Gas.
They have gasoline in them, so, and, um, you know, we're gonna hopefully have more equipment because of the size of the fields and everything and there's just, there's no place to put it, so we'd have to trail it over to the high school and put it in a pod over here, over there, so.
And that's in a, it's really an appropriate, convenient place, and there's, those fields are gonna take somebody a good amount of time to, to maintain them, especially since they're all gonna be up to beautiful condition. Um, so, that would be our thought on priority two. And then priority three is the phone system at Pearlie, because we're going to have upgraded phone systems from the building projects, both at the middle high school and at, at Pembroke. And obviously we're getting the, the same phone system. And then what we'd like to do, since we're gonna be moving all of the offices to central, the central offices over, there'll be more demand at Pearlie and it just makes sense to then have.
Yep.
All three phone systems, so that would be that, then, that's all we're recommending that, cause of, you know, we don't wanna be greedy, right? We, we know there's, you know, the other town departments have needs, but, um, they've been asked to look at, uh, five to seven year goals. And we do see some needs to do things in the auditorium. Um, you know, the floor, if you've been in there recently and the rugs, I mean, it's, it's kind of, um, it's hard to keep it clean. And, uh, we thought we would, um, take all the seats out and put an epoxy floor down. So, it, oh, remember when you went on the tour, remember the bathroom floors? Remember how nice those were?
Easy to keep clean.
So we thought, and they're easier to keep clean, so we thought, you know, may, we'd do an epoxy floor. And then if you, if you've been to town meeting, you know how dark it is in, in there all the time, we, the house lights. Mike thinks it's a function of just the, the lights are just getting old and the, the, the mechanism's getting old, so it's, it's not, it's, it's peak performance. Um, and then, I don't know, maybe we need to add some, um, some fixtures.
Old lights can be a fire hazard, too.
Mm-hmm. So, that, that would be something, and then the auditorium curtain, if I ever took you on a little field trip over there, you'd be.
No, how much does that cost?
That's a pretty expensive, that is a pretty expensive item, but it's not something you notice because it's a blue color. But if you go up and you start, cause those are, those curtains are layered. And if you start going and you look, I mean, they've got them taped with duct tape, some of them are just tattered.
They probably are in compliance with the fire code as well.
I'm, I'm just saying, they've had those, that's the, you know, it's been a curtain there for a long time. So, you know, if we were gonna do things long-term, you know, looking at the auditorium might be a, um, you know, but those are, those are more. And then, uh, the windows at Pearlie would be another project long-term. But, um, we're learning a lot about historic restoration, that it doesn't have to be like, exactly like it was, that there are some new, um, types of materials, that as long as it looks similar to the historic nature, that, so, that's not something we're proposing to do right now, but that's something that we're just thinking the committee might wanna consider long-term. So we're, we're asking about the approval of those three things.
Actually, they got four, because they did get, they did get the epoxy floor.
Oh, what's four? Oh, you did, they snuck that in, did they?
Oh, so.
What did Mike think that was, though? How much did, was he thinking?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty, but he updated it a little later this afternoon and told me twenty-four seven, he got the quote from the guy, twenty-four seven fifty exactly.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're talking about asking then for about a hundred and twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars at it.
Okay, so we're looking at fifty for the door.
Yep, fifteen for the shed, or what did he say?
Twenty, twenty for the shed, twenty-four seven five oh for the epoxy floor. And then fifty thousand for the phone system. So those are the four.
Okay, so, so fifty and fifty is a hundred, a hundred and twenty, and then, what did you say, twenty-four?
Twenty-four, so a hundred and fifty.
A hundred and fifty.
Is there, this little tiny, little bit of a C I P question, is there a, a five-year capital kind of ex, set of expectations somewhere?
Um, not, not.
For us or for the town?
For the schools, for the.
We're working on it, because Mike Farrell asked us, actually, I thought he's asked for a seven-year projection of vehicles, everything, so to include everything. So Mike Anderson and I are working on it, I'm not sure I'll have it for Wednesday's meeting, but.
Okay.
You know, we, we did talk about, you know, going out further with the windows and what other things would we include, but.
I remember it just came up last year on the C I P, just kind of the.
Yeah, and there should be a long, long-range view of it, I, I agree.
That's, that's.
I think that's actually in Mike's, in Mike's, uh, action plan, it's the long-range facilities plan, capital plan.
Okay. So, so, not to go back and beat this like a dead horse, but the fifty, fifty thousand dollars for the replace a steel exterior, exterior door and frame. And add security keyless entry system, the present door is rotted, lets in water, so I'm sure the whole thing, like the, um, threshold, like has to be dug out.
That's right.
And then concrete and everything.
He's not, he, he asked somebody for a price, so he's.
Yeah.
It's a real number.
Yeah.
Just, because I'm looking, I'm like, wow, twenty thousand dollars for a shed, it, to me is, is, sounds, in, it sounds less than I would think for a shed.
He's getting a, it's a prefab, prefab, uh, metal shed.
And I suppose on the door, we could not do the key thing? But it's like the thing for our thing, but if we're gonna do it, we should do it, because, you know, like, a lot of the teachers park, you know, way up in that upper lot and, you know, and it, and we, and that used to be unlocked.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, sure.
And then we said, no, if it's a secure, to us it was a security issue, so, you know, that didn't go over very well, but people understood, but if they, if there could be a key thing there.
That would be, that would be a big difference for them.
That would just be a really nice, yeah, I think it would be a nice, a nice thing to do.
Absolutely.
Okay. So do we actually appro, have.
You have to approve it.
Can I approve it in one?
Yeah.
Yeah, one. You guys wanna go forward with that?
Do you agree with the priority? Do you agree with that level of priority?
I, I think so, yeah, I think everything that, that was mentioned, though, is, um, definitely.
Priority one.
Priorities two, you know, like, I, I agree with you with that.
I don't think the C I P get, is happy when we come in with all priority ones.
The auditorium, because that is a mess.
It is.
Everything's a priority, but yeah, I think he's.
Every, every department has a priority one.
Everybody, everybody comes in with all priority ones.
Yeah, well, well, we're playing by the rules and we're not saying everything is one, we're saying it's a one, two, three.
Yeah.
Right? And I think that in the past, the committee's always thought about the, it's the health and safety, health and safety first, so that door is definitely health and safety.
Yeah.
The shed isn't really health and safety, neither are the phones.
No, but the fact that you put in a beautiful building there.
It's needed.
Yeah, I don't wanna put one of those pods, that would look crazy. Um, and so Tuesday night's the meeting.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, so we would know then?
No, no.
Oh, so how long does it take?
In the spring.
Yeah.
It was, it was like March.
I think they're gonna, but I think it's gonna be earlier this year, Mike, cause I think they're, that's why they're asking us.
Oh, right, cause then they have to get.
I was gonna say, we're starting earlier.
Yeah, and that's why, because what Mike said at the department head meeting is, the FinCom would like to start talking about C I P before the budget, instead of after the budget. So I don't know why, but that's what he told me, cause that's why it came, I'm so sorry, it came up like that, all of a sudden I said, oh, oh, we're late. We gotta do this, and thank goodness there was a meeting tonight, because, you know, it worked out, first I asked him for an extension, he was gracious. And said, you can have it on Monday, cause, you know, town hall's closed tomorrow, so.
It's interesting that they're moving it, cause it's a free cash question.
But they'll know what the free cash is gonna be.
We didn't know until.
Usually it's in December.
I thought Mike said it was being certified.
But they certify December.
It was in December?
Yeah.
'Cause then a lot went away between December and like March, 'cause we took off a lot, I don't know.
But I know he said it was gonna be early this year, 'cause we don't usually, we don't usually even tell them what we want until like January.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought this was earlier.
Yeah, this is definitely, it caught us.
Can I just clarify the order, the priority order? It was steel door one, shed two, phones three, and auditorium's kind of-
Four.
Or, as Carol said, next year.
Or, yeah, four, but-ish.
I don't wanna be greedy, I- I, we've been very fortunate, CIP's been gracious.
Okay, so, doors first, correct?
Yes.
Um, shed, flooring, foam.
Phones, flooring.
Phone flooring.
Phones, flooring.
So one, two, four, three.
Okay. One, two, four, three, okay. Uh, so the chair will entertain a motion to, how do I say this? Um, go forward with the request to the CIP?
Yeah, you can just say to approve the recommended-
Okay, to approve the recommended-
List of priorities.
Okay, list of priorities, eh, uh, one being replacing a steel exterior door at the middle high school with security keyless entry system in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Um, second is a, um, steel shed at the new Pembroke School location, um, cost twenty thousand dollars. Um, pho- uh, phone system at the Pearlie Elementary School, um, which will coordinate with the phone system at the new Pembroke School in the amount of fifty thousand dollars and funds for the removal of old flooring and installing of new epoxy floor in the middle high school auditorium in the amount of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. As presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Good luck with that on Wednesday. Okay, thank you, Joan, I think that's everything for you.
That's it.
Right?
Okay. Sometimes Joan has nothing, and other times she's got a whole list.
At least you stayed now, and it doesn't seem like you stayed for nothing.
Correct.
She never feels that way.
Yeah. Um, okay, subcommittee reports. I know tonight, you were supposed to have a governance meeting, but you guys changed it, right? Because we had-
The executive session.
Yeah.
Correct. But we've been working offline on the laptop policy, which is in here.
Yeah.
I think it's ready for approval.
Well, you can't approve it yet, because you have to have a first reading. So this could be normally, it's a three process, three-step process, but I'm asking if maybe you'd- you'd consider making this the first reading. And then the next meeting, we could do the final, just because the laptops can't get in teachers'-
Right.
Yeah. And the policy to do it. But we have it working offline, Laurie's right.
Budget and finance will be making a date-
Yeah.
To meet.
Yeah.
Um, negotiations, we do have a meeting coming up. Um, public relations.
We, um, we got together on the twenty-second, but we didn't have a forum. Um, so it was, it was very brief. And, uh, Carol had spoken with Jesse Lieb of Let's Talk, K-12 Insight. Uh, and she negotiated the price of, he offered to bring the price down to fifteen hundred dollars and two dollars and fifty cents per student, um, making the cost, the total cost for one year, five thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, but, and Jesse's gonna send you a draft contract.
He would prorate it this year, though.
We would prorate it, kind of to, as a pilot. Um, so it would be definitely less. Uh, and our goal is to present, uh, the information for school committee consideration on November twentieth. And we will get together again and have another meeting before then, so we can discuss that further. Um, I, we also had talked to other, uh, to superintendents in other districts that use the service, and they've been very happy with it. The goal is to give the public a highly accessible way to share their concerns, ask questions, and engage in dialogue with the school administration and/or school committee at any time. Also, to be able to quantify the level of public interest around any given topic. Um, and we wanna just generally increase our level of communication with the public. Uh, we discussed, well, I brought a draft of a communications plan based on one from Hampton, Virginia. And I, also, I emailed that to you, just as a baseline study, just to take a look at it, um, and a summary of all existing school committee policies regarding public relations, because of course, to create a communications plan, we would wanna, it would have to be consistent. Um, we, uh, we continual website development. We talked about just making that a regular topic at the public relations committee meetings. Um, and Wes is gonna look at whether he can enable users who are on the Georgetown Middle High School website to easily go back to the district website, which right now is a little difficult. Um, and Wes did say that a technology advisory committee, uh, will be meeting on November sixth at three fifteen P.M. in the Georgetown, in the middle high school library lab. Um, and, you know, anyone who has concerns or interests is- is welcome to join, join the committee. Uh, it's going to have teachers and administrators and everybody else, but any, you know, interested parents are- are welcome. Um, and the goal of that, that committee is to have a technology plan for the years ahead uh, by the end of this school year, um, in place and approved.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to plug Wes into one of your meetings, like in January, so he can talk about the process and where he is and- and all of that. But his final, the final plan would be something that would be available in the spring.
Right. Can you think of anything else?
No, is that?
No?
Yeah, okay.
Safety and payment?
No.
Um, school building, I know we were able to tour the new school that was built. I heard people loved the pictures that you put up, so that was very nice. They got, you know, they got to have a good idea of what the school's gonna look like, so thank you for doing that.
Oh, sure, my pleasure, I was, you know, so happy to see it, too.
Yeah, it was beautiful.
And, uh, you know, you don't get many opportunity, opportunities to see the interior, so that was really interesting.
In the day, though, so you can take some day pictures, 'cause it's a little hard to appreciate it when it's dark.
It is, it is, yeah.
And you had a meeting right after, so how did that go?
And we did have a meeting, um, let's see, Pembroke. Um, the capping of the north fields is continuing. The septic field was excavated and backfilled with sand. Um, paving binder coat is installed on driveways and parking areas. The masonry is completed, with the exception of the entrance sign. Um, the roof is completed in all areas, the vegetated roof was installed. That vegetated roof was really interesting, didn't you think? That was, um, it's cool, very cool.
You had to walk on it.
Yes. Um, the drywall is, is, was almost complete, painting in progress. The pro- the project is on target to be substantially completed by May, um, providing time to finish the punch list and bring in the furniture, fixtures, and technology. The, uh, current school will be raised as soon as school closes. Um, just looking at a- a date of June twenty-sixth for that. Um, construction remains on budget with, uh, a comfortable contingency. That's what Pat Saito called it, it's been evaluated, it's comfortable right now. Um, the move into the new school is scheduled to begin on June twenty-sixth and continue through the summer, um, basically finished by August twenty-seventh.
Nice.
Um, then we went into the Georgetown-
So does that mean school will begin before Labor Day next year?
Probably, yeah, I know. We have the, we have the ability, we'll have to-
I think Labor Day's late next year.
Okay, we'll worry about it then.
Right. I think it's late, I think it might be the seventh. So you'll probably be gone before.
That will be a, a different conversation, but at least-
I love that, I love that conversation every year.
But we're, uh, we, so we're leaving ourselves the flexibility to make that.
Yeah, I mean, we might go, we might wanna go after just because, but then you gotta worry about the summer. So we'll, we'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out. And we'll invite the public to, you know, again, share their opinions, and that's, that's all very important. We wanna hear everyone's voice. Um, and then we went into the Georgetown Middle High School meeting. Uh, the, we've completed the design development, yes?
At sixty percent.
At sixty percent, right, I was just, okay. And October twenty-eighth, sixty percent submission documents will be made to MSBA. I don't know where, okay. Um, and December thirtieth, ninety percent of the design documents will go to the MSBCA. The infrared roof scan was completed, um, the ins- finding that the insulation was in better shape than expected, but we need more insulation than we had expected, so that's what we needed to learn. Um, phase one environmental investigation has been completed to identify potential issues. There were no surprises, we know about all the potential issues. Um, so, and oil tanks that need to be removed. Uh, the PFA, the project funding agreement, which defines the level of reimbursement, was signed by all parties and returns, returned. Reimbursement is going to be relatively high, because we're doing very little site work, and site work is the, the part that MSBA does not reimburse. Um, construction is on schedule to begin April twentieth and last eight months through November twenty-seventh. Um, we'll be on a very tight timeline versus the Pembroke. Um, every day will count.
Yeah.
We may still be able to get a FEMA grant to mitigate water damage for a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty thousand, but if we got that grant, the state would expect us to use it to reimburse them, so.
We actually, we actually got the FEMA grants.
Oh, we did?
But, but, because there was some kind of glitch, not on our end, I don't know where it happened. In getting the, um, somehow, the, if, because we do not have some kind of a report on file at FEMA, they can't issue any money until that report is on file. And that report that has to be on file sometimes takes a year or two to pass the muster of FEMA, apparently. It's like quite a drawn-up process. So Mike said the good news is, we got award letter, he got award letters that we got, um, a grant for Pearlie and middle high school for the drainage. Um, it's, it's all, was all set to be awarded, but because there is some kind of glitch with this plan that needed to be submitted in advance, it's on hold.
You can have the money, but you can't.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, how could they approve it without having all the appropriate things on file?
I don't, I asked, that's exactly what I asked, I'm like, how could you even review the grant? If you didn't have that on file. But anyway, so, good news is, round three of the submission, we actually received, you know, we're approved for the funding. Now it's just really, you know, how do we get around this little-
No, where Pam says, though, that that would be used to reimburse the state. What if, what if, so what if it takes a year to a year and a half to do these documents? And then Pembroke is done, the middle high school is done. Do you still get, do you still get the money?
You still have to reimburse the state.
You still have to reimburse it. Oh, so we're gonna have the money, but it's just gonna come to us and then write out.
Well, you could use it for Pearlie.
Really, yeah.
Yeah, we could definitely use the Pearlie money, because we definitely-
Right, because that's not part of the project, right? Okay. Do you know how much the difference was?
Yeah, well, one, one was one in the one fifty range, and the other was in the one eighty range.
Wow, so pretty substantial.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, the pipes were inspected and are in need of cleaning, but all are connected. Those are the pipes under the gym, right? They were all connected, well, that was a pleasant finding, that was unexpected.
They thought that maybe some of the issues with the water was because there were pipes that weren't connected, but apparently they found that they were.
And, uh, all of the hazmat design services for the asbestos abatement have been approved. And then I just wanted to, um, to mention that we do, we have a parent who, um, has found some very interesting information about the potential, uh, risk of exposure to Wi-Fi radio waves. Um, and I do intend to bring this up at the next school building committee meeting. Um, I did mention it to Courtney Southwick of Drummy, Rosane, and Anderson, our architects, and she consulted with the project's technology advisor, um, who gave us a lot, who sent us a number of different articles and research findings, um, around, around the issue.
Pro and con.
Pro and con, right. So today, I was actually able to talk to Wes Vaughn about this, this risk. And he is aware that, um, you know, that some people are concerned about it. Um, he told me that the new router access points have radio wave frequencies that are much lower than those in the past. And so whereas an old router, uh, which I'm sure a lot of, there was a lot of concerns maybe around these old routers, would beam constantly at higher levels, uh, but the new ones emit extremely low radio frequency wave levels, um, until a device is turned on. Then the radio frequency waves target only the actual device, reducing the total amount of throughput and general exposure to RF waves by quite a bit. Um, and, you know, I had a very interesting discussion with my son in honors chemistry about this, because there are all these different wavelengths, and there's like seven different kinds. And these radio frequency waves are, I mean, they are wavelengths, and they're emitted, you know, by, by lights, by all, by cell phones, all kinds of things, they are-
They're all around.
But they, you know, especially at very low levels, tend to be of lower risk. And hopefully, these new routers, what, what, this parent was, you know, just concerned that at this time in the process, we do everything we can to make sure that, you know, we're, yeah, we're reducing the risk as much as possible for our children to keep them safe. And I think she has, you know, some valid concerns, and at least, you know, we need to just discuss the issue and make people aware.
This information?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And how did she feel?
Um, you know, she's just glad that we're having the conversation, um, and I think it's a conversation worth having. So, because we are in the, the design phase, the building, you know, it's, um, so just to be aware that-
I'm glad she brought it up.
Uh, you know, I don't know if the, the routers, per se, have been purchased yet, but, you know, when they are, it'd be helpful if somebody would be, ask, you know, questions, that we could buy the safest, most modern routers possible.
That would be Wes, right?
That would be Wes, yes. And, and I did mention to her, too, that, I mean, I can, I can believe that, just because in my own personal life, and we keep getting new routers in our house, like every few years. And they are, each one is very different than the last one. I mean, I can see, you know, the, the look, the-
I'm sure they change quite-
They change, right.
She also talked about how they're not, they don't emit out into the room, they, they emit, they're, you know-
The newer ones, the newer ones. Yeah, the older ones may have more.
And it's not like a cellphone where you're, like, putting it right to your, to your ear, it's in the ceiling.
Right.
And they, they said that their recommendation is to still go with Wi-Fi, because they feel like the benefits to doing it outweigh the risks.
You know what else I noticed in the strategic plan? Is that there's a step to create a fiber optic wide area network with the town, potentially. And, you know, I just wanted to mention that, because if that happened, it could, like, simultaneously facilitate our wireless network while at the same time maybe reducing the extent of it? I- I- I don't understand how all these things work, I don't really know.
Talk to me about parking, as I'm there, but, uh, that's tech talk to me.
But it is a factor in the, in the future of the technology planning for the town.
Absolutely.
Um, and so we can, you know, that's something to discuss more as we open the conversation up.
No, it was, it was, it was great, the way she brought it forward, and we, it caused us to do some research, and we all learned something from it.
Mm-hmm, yes, we appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Okay, I know CICAC hasn't met.
Well, it's not, there's another meeting, uh, a meeting coming up on October twenty-ninth. Um, it is from, it's an unusual time. It's a coffee, it's nine to ten A.M. in the morning at the middle high school.
Now, is Donna, is that gonna be the?
With Donna, yes, that, that is what it is.
Oh, it's in Donna's, it's in Donna's.
So she's doing two of those, she was doing one in October and one again in like April.
Um, that's, well-
Yeah, and April was gonna be the nighttime meeting.
April is developing the social skills in the age of social media. Um, that's March, she's gonna do another one.
And that was a nighttime, right?
Um, yes, I think all the other ones are nighttime, this is just a, yeah.
So October twenty-ninth at nine A.M.?
That's correct.
Um, okay, we just have a couple of approvals to go over.
I don't think we have, unless you have questions, I don't think we have to talk about the excess soil.
Yeah, I think we-
Good. Now you're reaching my point, like, I don't wanna talk about soil anymore.
Okay, so we'll have more opportunities for that, I'm sure. I hope not.
Perished, though, probably. We have a generous donation from the PTA in the amount of nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars to help with the Plymouth plantation field trip that the third graders go on. And that is a very, it's, it's a pretty pricey field trip, so that's very generous of them to donate that much money, because I know-
It's a wonderful field trip.
Yeah, it's a great field trip, but it, yeah, so that'll help out, um, everybody. And I love how the PTA does field trips, because it does impact everybody.
It does, it's really helpful. It's a huge difference, I, I can't imagine this area without it.
So the, um, chair will entertain a motion to accept the PTA donation in the amount of nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars for the Plymouth plantation third grade field trip with gratitude.
So moved.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, and then we had another very generous donation, and this, since I've been on the committee, um, I, I remember this donation from the Thompson family, um, each year in memory of their son Patrick, who was a Georgetown graduate, and they give that to the athletic department, which is very generous of them to do that. Um, so the chair will entertain a motion to accept the Thompson family donation in the amount of three thousand, fifty dollars in memory of their son Patrick with gratitude.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then we just have to approve, um, the list of homeschool families. Uh, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, um, update to the list of current homeschool families, um, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And, uh, we already talked about Queen's sale, and the, um-
It's the policy.
The policy, right, I J N D E titled, uh, distribution of faculty use of laptops. And as you had said, this governance is going to, so, so this will be the, what, reading?
What reading.
If you, if you approve it, it'll be the first reading.
Okay.
So the next meeting would be when you adopt it, so, um, if you have any questions about it-
No, I think of the-
You know, I think we wrestled a little with the issue of, um, damage, you know, and, and, um, insurance, and that, um, so I think what we've come to now is, if this will buy insurance, and then if, if something happens to it, and it's, the other person's fault, off-site, they would pay the deductible, which, I think you, you showed me the, the range, it was like fifty bucks, right?
There was, there was different, different deductibles, um, you could have a hot, you have no deductible, or fifty or a hundred, and what Wes's suggestion was to do the fifty, so that there's still some ownership of them being, of them taking care of the laptop.
Right.
Um, it's gonna cost the district about, um, five thousand dollars a year, um, and we would probably-
To cover the insurance.
To pay the insurance, we'd, we'd get a three-year plan, and the insurance, um, the value on the insurance for each laptop was nine hundred dollars, because that's what we had paid for them, so they'll replace them or repair them, so. I don't, I don't really think you can do it without it.
I think if we're requiring teachers to use it, then I think it, it's a lot to, to not, and it's, it's an investment for us.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's a cost of doing business, sort of.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so we don't have to do anything with that, other than, um, talk about it, read it, and talk about it next time. Okay.
Okay.
And the, uh, arrangement with the GA and the town is very close.
Okay, so that might not even be on the Tom meeting?
Probably will be passed over.
Okay, that is right, so Tom meeting is Monday night, seven o'clock, uh, at the middle high school. I do just wanna mention, I know we'll have a meeting before that, but, um, the music parents have their auction on November seventh, it's a Friday evening. Uh, and that's always a fun night, that's at the Georgetown Club, uh, while it's now-
Black Swan.
Black Swan.
I know, it's always the Georgetown Club to me, too.
Uh, okay, so the Black Swan, it starts at six-thirty, um, and that's really a fun night, and they are still looking for donations, if anyone wants to donate to, uh, their auction, um-
Middle School Play tomorrow night, right?
Oh, Middle School Play, yes.
Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday, and you, so you can buy tickets at the door.
At the door, yeah, okay.
And tomorrow at lunch, actually, it's gonna be three dollars a ticket. The kids were so excited, I went over there for, I don't know, I went over there, they had, they had a meeting, and, you know, they're all out there making, in the hallway, making their props, and they got their little costumes on, hot, they're, hi, Mrs. Jacobs, they're high-fiving me, and, you know, I'm so excited, I'll be there on Friday night, or, but they're just so, you know, I love that age, 'cause they're just so excited and proud of what they're doing, you know?
Oh, good. It's gonna be wonderful.
It's gonna be great.
It's Law and Order Fairy Tale Unit.
Oh, that's good, who says, SBU?
Fairy Tale Unit.
That's great, okay, so that's, that's tomorrow on Saturday, great. Okay, um, I think that's it for tonight, so the meeting, um, is adjourned at ten twenty-
A motion to adjourn?
Oh, okay, and there is, um, no, as far as the, um, executive session, we don't need an executive session, um, we even-
They don't need an executive session.
Okay, so, no.
I think you're right.
Um, no need for an executive session, and, um, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn at ten twenty-two PM.
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, good night.
All right, everybody.
I was nervous, because I didn't know-